I'm ready if you're ready.
Okay. Good afternoon, the Board of Trustees' regular meeting is now called to order at 4:01 PM. We welcome members of the public. Instructions on making public comment are posted in Item 1 on the agenda. We will ask each agenda item if there is public comment. Kathryn, will you please do roll call? Okay. So I'll call it student trustee, S. Otto Gonzalez. Not here. Trustee Baldini.
Here.
Trustee Goff.
Here.
Trustee Rios.
Here.
Trustee Baker.
Here.
Trustee Deluna.
Here.
Trustee Iverson. Absent. And I am here as well. Uh, we, Kathryn, you want to open up an image of the flag?
Yeah.
And if not, you know, I'm happy to.
Um, let me try a different browser. I just don't know how to get that thing to go away.
But I think in light of the, the technical difficulties, what we'll do respectfully is we will skip the Pledge of Allegiance. And again, just to move on with the agenda and we'll move on to Action Item 2.3, Adoption of Agenda. Do we have any changes? Board members?
Nope.
We've seen none. Uh, we will adopt the agenda by consensus and move on to our study session, uh, 3.1, regarding the student housing project. Mr. Reeves, are you going to, uh, emcee us this, uh, afternoon?
I don't see Jim in the meeting. Okay, well, this is a.
Uh, we have Ann Volz here. Can you all see my screen now?
I do. Let me give Jim a call.
Jim is, Jim is in attendees. He needs to be moved into a panel.
I'm so sorry. Hold on. I guess I have more going on. Oh, he's even raising his hand. Oh, and so is, there's David. Good. And let me find. Jim, here we come. I'm so sorry. Can, can everybody see the screen now?
Yeah.
Yes, the board ox screen.
Hi, David.
Hi, how you doing?
Good, welcome. It's like a housing reunion. Good to see you all. It's been a while.
So we will update the, um, attendance to show that student trustee S. Otto Gonzalez is, is present.
Where's Jim? Jeff was handing it over to you a minute ago, Jim, and we realized you were, uh, in your own, in your own special room, I guess.
Well, I clearly, I clearly dropped the baton. I'm sorry.
No, you did not. Uh, it's, it's been a interesting afternoon in many respects. So this is kind of just par for, par, par for the course, I guess. Um, but, uh, Jim, do you, uh, you're going to emcee us, uh, this, uh, afternoon for the study session?
Yes, trustee Dodd, uh, if you're ready to pass the baton, I'll make sure I grab it this time.
It is passed.
All right, thank you. Well, thank you and good afternoon. Um, it's, it's an important time for the college and this very exciting initiative related to our student housing initiative. I wanted to just, uh, just have a few remarks as we open up and then introduce you to our team, uh, the folks that have been working very hard on our behalf. First of all, just a misnomer about the title of this, uh, of this study session. The title is Review of Terms and Conditions of Financial Transactions. I want to be careful that we manage our expectations here. We're not going to go really deep into, uh, the terms and conditions. Those are typically, uh, those typically continue to be negotiated. And so those are typically, uh, addressed in, uh, in, in session with the Board of Trustees. Um, we will be touching on some of those terms and conditions in this presentation, but we won't go to too much depth with those, with respect to those. Let me introduce you to our team. There are names I'm sure you've heard before. Ann Volz is with the Volz Company and the Scion Group. Uh, Ann has been associated with the NBC program from the outset and, uh, and has helped us with visibility, with our viability studies, uh, developer negotiations and communications work. So she has been, uh, the common voice throughout, and you'll hear from her in just a moment. Mike Loganville, I don't know if he's here, but he works with Ann closely, helps, uh, helps expedite the process and keeps us, uh, certainly keeps the college moving forward with respect to its responsibilities. Ted Risher is an attorney with Scion. He is an expert in the financial structures. He is the liaison with Citibank. He acts on our behalf, negotiates, represents our interests, and, and, uh, can be a tough guy to negotiate against. So we're glad he's on our team. Seth Kirschenberg is with the firm of Cutac Rock. I, I, I really appreciate that name. It's memorable. But Seth and his team have been with us through discussions and negotiations on the ground lease. He's advised on our environmental issues and, and worked on the coordination agreement with us. And then Erin Stagg, uh, many of you have worked with her. Erin's a stalwart with us, is with, uh, SCLS California, represents our interest with respect, uh, to the California Ed Code and has been a liaison for the college in negotiations with county and local agencies. So they are very familiar with this project. Um, they've worked with us throughout and through some, through some challenging times and, and, and continue to keep us focused on what's important, and that's providing, uh, housing, a housing program for our students. So with that, with no further ado, I'd like to turn this over to Ann, who will, as she does so well for us, uh, make a presentation about, uh, an overview about where we are today. Go ahead, Ann.
Okay, thanks, Jim. And yes, definitely a lot of familiar faces on this call. So good to be back here with everyone. And really, at such a critical juncture, um, this is called a presentation. It's certainly, um, you know, open to questions as always, um, from us. And that's why I'm so pleased too, to have, um, Ted, Erin and Seth with us too. So we're all here to answer questions on these documents. And also, as Jim said too, is a ground lease and a coordination agreement, which we'll talk about later, are in continual negotiation. So, um, this is definitely meant to be a high-level overview, a thought of you. Oh, I can't, I was just going to advance the slides. Next slide, please. Thanks, Kathryn. Um, just as a reminder, is, um, at least I became first familiar that Napa Valley College was looking at campus housing in as early as late 2017. The Martin Group joined, um, the team in 2019. And there was a competitive process, of course. There will be a not-for-profit owner. The agreements that we're about ready to go through are between the college and your not-for-profit owner. So that is, um, we call them NCCD. And they have been serving in this function for several colleges for years. I, I've certainly, and so are my colleagues, very familiar, um, with the firm. They're also the not-for-profit owner at Orange Coast College and, um, as well as will be at Santa Rosa Junior College. So as we've seen throughout, um, the course, and as Jim said, there's been, um, there's been challenges. I don't know any development project that doesn't have something. But we do have a full set of DSA-approved plans for a 520-bed housing project. Your housing project is, is really unique and very wonderful because you had a footprint of land that has allowed for us to serve a very diverse student population through the different unit types, students with families, um, apartment-style living, and then also traditional residence halls, so various price points, always focusing on affordability. Affordability, quality, and certainly a student-focused experience. That has never, um, lost the, the focus of the team throughout. And so the next two documents, and we have spoken about them through several years. Gosh, I think the first time was a board presentation in 2018, early 19, going through that as we go forward, um, there is this ground lease document and this coordination agreement in a public-private partnership. They are in every P3 arrangement. So, um, also too, and we've, I know we've talked about it briefly, and we've had support from several people even on this call, is the state, um, last year put forth SB 169, which has allocated, um, significant amount of money for grants to provide affordable housing. Napa Valley College submitted its proposal and, or its application last October 31st, and we are still trying to hopefully be awarded those funds. Um, we should probably know more with no promises, but most likely more in Jim. And while originally we started, we were really looking at a March, or March, I'd be, uh, August of 2023 opening date. We certainly had some site conditions that we needed to make sure, of course, when we open the campus housing, it needs to be absolutely perfect for your students to really have all the outcomes that its on-campus student housing experience provides. But we now are actually, we're, we're not late by any means at all, but we, to stay on schedule, if we do want to provide this quality, affordable, on-campus housing to mouthful by 2024, we need to move fairly quickly on the coordination agreement and the ground lease approval. Because after this, we go to, out to the investment community for, for them to essentially buy the bonds, and therefore we can start construction. If all goes as we, um, hope it will go, and there's, um, some parts are out of our control, mainly the investment community, we should have a groundbreaking potentially in July of this year. And that would certainly allow for that August of 2024 opening. You do not open student housing ideally ever late because that is very much you want it to tie to your academic calendar. So we're always very focused in on that date and that academic calendar. So the next slide. So as we mentioned, the ground lease, and it, when you see it summarized in one slide and you think of all the hours from so many team members, from the college to the attorneys, to, of course, our team as well, is, it's a very thick document because it is the overarching governing document for your long-term, as you can see, over 40 years, potentially slightly less, but close to 40 years, with your not-for-profit owner, NCCD. So there are, uh, certainly a lot of terms. And as we mentioned too, we are continually always in the college's best interest, guiding those discussions and leading those negotiations to make sure that we're always holding tight to, um, the strategic objectives. So what are just some, there's risk. I, I don't know any development project either. I've been doing this now for 30-some years that doesn't have risk involved. And college participation to really focus in on those risks, we're always solving to keep those student rents low. We want access to your students. We want to provide, um, that the students can have those outcomes. There are students that need shelter. We heard it from your students. So we're trying to help as many students from as many diverse populations as we can. The risks right now that are in your document, which I, I know we've shared, um, starting as early at least as last fall, if not sooner, is there's what's called subordination of expenses. And the college has committed up to $650,000 each year, should the project not achieve, um, its pro forma. The also though, we, with, oh, as we look out and as, as Jim said too, is you always want Ted on your team, is, and, and certainly Seth and Erin and their colleagues as well in the college, is the project documents do require that that liability, it, it does get paid back to the college over time. As the project, of course, is debt service, um, gets paid off, the project can essentially pencil better and your risk goes down every, as the years go by. But we do want to make sure you're aware that that commitment is in the documents as we speak. Go to the next slide. So the coordination agreement, it's, it's about what it sounds like. It details out who is responsible for what. And it's a, it also too, it extends the lifetime of the bond. You'll have a management agreement that's much more fluid in day-to-day operations and whatnot. But the coordination agreement overall, frankly, puts into where the college can have control. It's a very big advantage of the public-private partnership as opposed to just a fully private model, is you have a lot of control. And the coordination agreement defines that in a legal sense, in a legal document. So it's going through, how should we market the project? When can you, if you want to ever build a Phase 2, when can that happen? Who are those eligible residents that can live in the campus housing? They must be affiliated with an educational use. But there's a waterfall. All of this is identified in your ground lease and your coordination agreement and really identifying who is going to do what. Um, there are, the ground lease is where all the financial support is identified. The coordination agreement is more like I just shared, is the sharing of responsibilities. Go to the next slide.
Ann, I hope you don't mind me just jumping in there. You said something, just something that is on my mind. Obviously, first and foremost, the idea that student housing should be for students. Um, but in, in, in considering, right, the risk, and one risk in my mind is that we're not, you know, able to occupy all the beds, um, and we're maybe low on occupancy. You mentioned some, since I say that, that, I forgot how you characterize it, but effectively the question is, you know, if we get into that situation, is it possible to rent, rent out to people that are not enrolled at the, at, at the college?
So. No, basically.
It's not.
But I'm going to caveat the no. I'm going to caveat your no. Is there's a waterfall that is in the ground lease? And it is first prioritized to students, I believe, with nine credit hours or more. Then it goes down to, um, a part-time student of six hours or more. In your waterfall as well are your faculty and staff, could also be residents. We have anyone that's affiliated with an educational purpose with the school. So visiting professors. And Ted, I think you might want to add on right now.
Yeah, and Seth, correct me if I'm wrong. We, we've identified a catch-all group too, that we can approve, uh, other eligible residents. And these could be from neighboring institutions as long as they qualify under the Ed Code and qualify under the IRS guidelines. So we do have the ability to reach different pools of potential residents outside of the Napa Valley College community in case we, uh, encounter that kind of, uh, of shortfall in leasing. But Seth, please confirm.
Yeah, no, that's correct. And the only thing is, and that is also with your approval. And basically what, uh, both Ted and Ann are trying to make sure is that we don't impact the financing and, and the tax-exempt, uh, nature of the financing. And, and that's why we're doing it to certain parties.
So that's the piece. It's, it's just keeping that, that kind of nonprofit status. I understand. Okay, okay. Um, can, and could, would you guys mind just embellishing a little bit to see kind of, I'm, again, just trying to be very wary of the risk and understand who those groups are. So you think it could be, let's just say, Napa Valley Unified School District teachers or something, who are not, you know, they're within the county, but potentially contemplated under, under the Ed Code?
That is correct. They are not specifically identified. Um, I just want to, we actually, when we did our study, we did a survey of the Napa Valley Unified, um, faculty and staff as well. And there is demand identified from that cohort. But Ted, please go ahead.
Yeah, now, what we're, uh, typically what happens is you go to the owner, um, you jointly identify, uh, additional pools of potential residents. You get a, you get a legal opinion that their tenancy in the building will not jeopardize the tax-exempt finance, uh, the tax-exempt nature of the financing, and you can go. So I, I'm sure you can have access to many different pools of potential residents if we, if we encountered a shortfall in leasing specifically to Napa resident, or Napa Valley College, uh, students and, and stakeholders.
Thank you.
Yeah, great question, Jeff. Thank you. So the market conditions, um, I think we've all seen the news. And as we know, the, um, the rates are rising. So I'm, I'm sure I'm not sharing anything that we don't know. That doesn't help us. That obviously does burden the pro forma. Uh, we've seen, as you can see, 180 basis points rise since January 1st. That's significant. Citibank is the underwriter, and they have been keeping us abreast at all times. And they, working in law with Martin Group and obviously with our review, have been updating the pro formas. Construction costs in our state are about as excessive as they get, especially too, um, there's a lot of requirements, of course, for community college construction. There is not an outlook right now that says that's going to go down anytime soon. So we have had to, um, adjust the pro formas. And, um, and frankly, try as, as, uh, much as we can to protect the college, but there, there is more, um, credit enhancements that may be required from the school to ensure and keep those rents as low as possible. Our, typically our last resort, but we do have to go there at times, is to rent. Uh, we're trying not to. Rents in your area have gone up about 15% in the last year for the recent market study that was just done by MGT. So we've had some conditions that frankly do not, um, help us. I wish it was last year, but we don't get to have that. Um, so we have adjusted accordingly. So I just want to keep, um, as Ted said, I think earlier on the call today too, by City to City, this is a no-surprise approach. So they've continually been updating those pro formas. Go to the next slide. So, um, really focusing in and, and the strategic objectives, and they're not on this, um, slide, but when I first met with all of you, and Mike Loganville too, was even with me in those meetings, it was all about affordability and access to campus housing. Your students shared with us and through two other studies that students want to live on campus. They want access to that collegiate, college experience, but they also want access to work in your community. And several of your students, uh, the majority are driving at least about 45 minutes to come to class and come back. That is challenging to a student being full-time. But also too, that, that affordability, there just is not, um, and from any of our off-campus research that we performed, and I'm seeing the obvious, and so if you live in the area, is there, there is not low-cost communities that, uh, most, the majority of your students can afford, where they can afford to live. So while I, the previous slide said the market conditions don't look great, no one on this call is a futurist, but from everything in our research and everyone else's research is it doesn't look like it's going to all of a sudden get better. So we are not here ever to pressure anyone. That is the last thing that we would ever want to do. We are saying, done our research, that to achieve 2024 and to still be in the, um, and keep affordability low, as low as we can, given the changing market conditions, we would recommend that if you want to achieve all of those conditions and achieve those objectives, that we need to proceed as quickly as we can. Of course, I hope you know that two years have gone into negotiation of these documents and whatnot. So, and as we mentioned, this is a five-year process at least to date. Is, um, when, since it has been a five-year process, there's certainly been college investment. There is a pre-development agreement that was approved in January of 2020, um, that, at a board meeting, we weren't present there, but that has put the, the college, of course, is at risk. You've been working with a developer in good faith. It has been defined though, in a pre-development agreement. All of those costs are included in the pro forma. And as is typical with the public-private partnership, those costs are reimbursed at financial close. So right now, that's looking, um, that is about a little bit over $6 million right now is the college liability to date. That, um, again, that, that's not all what the college has spent. That's really including all, mainly the Martin Group expenses, all those design costs, um, cost of submitting their costs, um, has been spent to date. So the next step too, is, we will be coming back and asking if the board, um, will approve the ground lease and the coordination agreement. And we're really trying hard, as we mentioned, to preserve that 2024 opening. This is a recruitment tool. That has been proven, not by, um, my firm or Scion or anyone else, but it is a recruitment tool that's been proven. And to keep that affordability, we are hoping to offer that experience by 2024. It was disappointing to that it couldn't be 2023. But again, we had to do all the proper due diligence, of course, to ensure optimal outcome. Anybody on this call, anything else that we should be sharing before we open up dialogue? Thank you. And any questions, of course, we're here to answer.
Trustees, any questions? I see one hand raised. Trustee Rios?
Yeah, I just have a, a quick question. Um, you mentioned that there might be some credit enhancements needed from the college. What are those? What, what does that mean?
So currently, the college's exposure is limited to the 10 years of subordinated expenses that Ann mentioned earlier. Uh, we have stressed to Citibank over the course of the last few months that we will not tolerate last-second retrading or, or surprises or anything like that. To date, they have not suggested that the college needs to put up anything else other than that contingent subordinated expense requirement. Uh, if they were to come to us with a material request for additional credit enhancement, it could take any number of forms, and we would obviously, um, you know, report that back out to the board. Uh, but as of now, my assumption is that we're closing with our original credit support package intact.
Thank you.
I see another hand raised. Trustee Baker?
Yeah, I just wanted to ask really quickly about, um, when you were discussing the potential to broaden our pool of potential, uh, residents if we're not able to fill the spaces with students. Um, if we were to make space available to, say, teachers from NBUSB or some other entity that's allowed, um, do we, do we have to offer them the same cost per bed? Or are we allowed to raise the rents for people who are not students?
So first and foremost, and, and Ann, jump in here if you want. They, through two market studies, one performed earlier, one performed recently, we want to emphasize that it is not our anticipation that this project can't fully lease up comfortably with Napa Valley College students and stakeholders. So I, I appreciate the, um, worst casing, because I do it habitually. Uh, but we want to emphasize that we're not, in, in any way, shape or form, do we think we're overbuilding and not, you know, sort of building to a responsible segment of the established demand. Um, that being said, the college's and the owner's only responsibility is to approve a budget that achieves the necessary debt service coverage requirement by the different investors. And, uh, and so within that, uh, unless we have state requirements for SB 169-funded units, which then put a cap on our rent, you know, within that, uh, very broad requirement, we can manipulate rents how we see fit. If we see, if we see, if the project were not to lease up completely with Napa Valley College stakeholders, and we identified another pool of potential, uh, lessees that could tolerate more rent, we certainly could do that. As long as we're, uh, annually developing and approving a budget that shows the investors that, uh, the revenues are sufficient to cover the debt service at an adequate, um, at an adequate ratio.
God has, uh, has left for the moment. Are there other questions that we can, uh, assist with? This team has been at it for some time, uh, and knows, knows the project and seeing it develop. Uh, uh, so if you have anything you'd like to share or a question, please feel free.
Sorry, I stepped away. Um, is it, uh, trustee Baldini? Go ahead, please.
Yes, thank you too, Mr. Reeves. Is there a go or no-go as far as the market on this? I mean, if additional points are tacked on to the 180?
Yeah, I mean, our general sentiment, sir, is that we need to close quickly. We can do a little bit of gaming to identify maybe some temporal bumps in the market. I would certainly want to pay attention to the investors that are particularly fond of California. We've asked Citibank to message privately through their desk to gauge sentiment from some of the larger institutional investors. There is a little bit of strategy because we're not going to take it to market until we know we can fill the book. But but overall, the idea is to close this transaction as quickly as possible with a modest amount of value engineering and some, some minor tweaking of the rents to basically stop the hemorrhaging. We don't anticipate that the markets are going to improve over the course of the next several months. And so I think our biggest risk mitigation tool is to close quickly and strongly.
Trustee Goff, I see your hand up. I just wanted to quickly piggyback off of that question. Is it possible, you know, just thinking about me personally, I got a mortgage for my house, but we were able to lock in the rate, you know, for a 30-day period or something like that. Obviously, I think if you're a betting person, interest rates are clearly going to go up. I mean, that's kind of, kind of the obvious thing where we're at, and the Fed certainly declared that. Is it possible to lock in those rates? And I'll just ask the question, the reason why is, is I'm curious about the implications of how SB 169, depending on the governors may revise tomorrow, which should be published tomorrow, and potential opportunities for the college there, how that might benefit, benefit the college, improve our financing capabilities and so on.
I'll answer that in two parts, since there were really
Multiple compound question, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, there, there's actually no product in the market to lock rates in municipal bonds. We've actually tried to negotiate them before. The cost of such, the cost of such mechanisms are not something that traditional, you know, banking institutions or other types of entities are willing to undertake. So the answer is no, that the yield will be fixed when the bonds are priced. And again, that is a formality. They will be sold by Citibank and locked into the book and then priced, and then they will be fixed. So there's no mechanism available for us to try and hedge future rate growth. As far as the SB 169 funding, we have requested that City creates a short-term redemption tranche to accommodate that, that, that hopeful eventuality. Of course, that comes at a price because our, the investors that buy these bonds are typically fiduciary and longer term, and so charge a higher yield for the luxury of being able to redeem bonds early. So we're working with City to try and optimize the pricing on that tranche. And that is also probably a product of whether or not we can get a single buyer or whether we're diffused into probably two primary buyers with lots of people in the $1 to $5 million or $1 to $10 million range on the bond. So it's really a product of how City can sell them, but we've indicated to them that it is our desire to preserve that flexibility at as cost-effective a rate as possible.
Trustee Goff.
Yeah, I know we're focusing on finances. I just wanted to ask the question, does this mean, since, since we're moving forward, that we have, what's the word? I've lost the word that I was going to use, but we've kind of gotten over all the hurdles when it comes to city and county requirements for this project. Are we all set to go?
I'd like to answer that.
Go ahead. Yeah, I'll jump in here. Yes, we received notification. The oversight was actually transferred to the State Water Resources Quality Control Board, and we received notification that our closure plan and the various engineering controls that are put into the project are approved. So the project does have its required approvals.
We are good to go from the entitlement side. So that's, that's been, that's a significant hurdle. Thanks to all, good work of a lot of people.
Great, thank you.
I've got another question.
Thanks.
Does anyone know that, let's say that Citibank cannot create this tranche, I think you called it Ted, and we don't know what happens, whether we're going to get any money before we have to get this closed. Is it still possible for us, if anybody knows, to get some of that funding if it were approved? And could we use that for, I don't know, other operation expenses or shortfall on, that we may have?
They're strictly for capital costs, and we know for a fact that Citibank can create the tranche to accept the early redemption. We did the same thing for Santa Rosa. So we're not worried about structurally being able to do it so much as we want to make sure City gets good pricing on it because you know, that early redemption comes at a price.
Right. Okay, thank you.
Trustee Rios, this SB 198 or 169, I'm sorry, is strictly devoted to enhancing student housing in the state. So we can't pay a light bill with it, unfortunately.
I see. Trustee Rios, do you have any other questions?
No, let me lower my hand.
No, that's fine. I just wanted to make sure. I have, I will just, I think, got three questions, and I'll just shoot them off all it, all it altogether. The first question is, in terms of that $6 million liability, assumed, I guess, liability, will there be an auditing, I guess, of that, those pre-development costs? Just to make sure that, you know, what was spent was spent properly under the agreement. And that's the first question. The second, and maybe it's just two questions, the second is just in terms of the bonds that we're looking, I mean, is it, is it any sort of potential to impact the college's credit rating? And I think, Ted, you kind of spoke this earlier, and this is getting back to the SB 169, but in terms of the schedule, if we were to, let's just say the governors may revise to include additional allocation for student housing, and let's just assume, just for the hypothetical, that it's, you know, a significant amount. I think what is, I think, what is our schedule look like moving forward? You know, with the bond market and going through all of the documents. I mean, is, I'm sure City isn't going to be, or bondholders aren't going to be interested in knowing that there's additional funding allocated. They're going to want to see that the governor's budget, the signed budget does include, you know, the Napa Valley College project. So I just, and I'm not sure what date, Jim's told me this before, I think, if it's June, I think it's maybe June 1 or June 30th that the governor has to sign the budget. But I think what does it look like? What is the schedule effectively if, you know, there, we do have a great chance, we being the college have a great chance of getting those SB 169 funds?
So we got three questions out there, and Ann and Seth, feel free to contribute. In terms of auditing and reconciling pre-development costs, we have looked at the pre-development costs. And, and, you know, nothing seems out of sorts. However, we will make sure that we go back to take a look at everything. It hasn't been our experience that Martin Group hasn't been spending loads of money on behalf of the project, but I think that's an excellent suggestion, sir, and certainly multiple reviews by people who are much better than I in terms of judging whether or not those costs are legitimate or not is warranted. So we will do that immediately. In terms of the credit impact, the bonds themselves will expressly not be a liability of the college. However, from a credit, you know, so, so that's a balance sheet in debt capacity, sort of impact or non-impact, as you will. However, from a credit perspective, I think there will be, there will be a notion, or there will be attention paid to the express terms of the credit support. And I think, you know, assuming the project delivers and stabilizes and performs the way I think just about everybody thinks it will, I think it will be a credit positive, but I don't think it will be a very surgical sort of review by any of the rating agencies, but will more so sort of contribute to the overall sort of success and bottom line of the college, which I always think, you know, is a credit positive. In terms of the schedule, as it relates to SB 169, I will say that as much information as we can have about whether or not those funds are going to make their way to the college prior to us closing this deal is better. If we can do away with, if, if we can do away without any specialized financing instruments to accommodate it, that would be best. And so we're going to draw a very fine line between making sure we have as much information as possible to make the best educated decision about how to accommodate those funds. And, and, but, but monitor that along with the notion that we do have a drop-dead date in order to ensure the fall '24 delivery. And so we'll try and optimize that time, those two timelines, and align them as much as possible.
And sorry, what does that mean in terms of we're going to try to avoid specialized financing instruments?
If we got, our current bond issuance is just over $150 million. That includes hard, soft costs and financing costs. If we were to receive or be assured of being receiving $31 million, we would reduce our hard costs and it would have a ripple effect throughout the budget. So if we could do that and simply go to market for, say, $120 or $115 million instead of $150, which would allow us the ability to not only push rents down on the SB 169 units, but probably across the board since the payment of hard costs is going to have other sort of prorata effects on the budget. You know, we would certainly do that. And, you know, if we were assured of receiving those funds and we knew we were going to get them on date X, we'd issue for $31 million plus the prorata cost less on the assumption that we were going to get that money, it was going to be usable by Martin Group to pay Clark Construction to build the building.
And, and, the dumb question, but we do think that that would have a positive impact on, on, on the finances of the project, right?
Absolutely. We, there's, so there's a ceiling on the rents that we can charge for the SB 169 units. The, the, even the ceiling for those rents, which are 30% of, 50% of area median income based on household, are extraordinarily affordable. But what we found is that we can manipulate those rents, bring them closer to the ceiling and still get a downward effect on the other non-SB 169 rents. So it would take a little bit of finagling with the pro forma numbers, but I think it would have benefits across the program.
Okay, that makes sense. Thank you. Any other questions? Seeing none. Mr. Reeves, is there anything you'd like to add before we close the study session?
Well, again, I appreciate you taking some time out to continue the conversation about this. Again, it's an exciting project. It meets our, our objectives in terms of supporting students. And it will be moving along fairly quickly now. So I think Catherine has provided some, some options for our next meeting to discuss this. And, and we'll have, we'll have information to you in advance of that meeting so you can review it and obviously be prepared with any further questions. So at that, I would ask anyone on the team if they have any final comments or, or want to amend what they've said.
Only, only if the attorneys on the call thought some of my legal explanations were a little facile. I want to let you know I do not have a JD. But it's always been my hope and goal to hang out with lawyers as much as possible.
Except when off, when off the clock.
Well, that's when they're the most fun.
Trustee Dodd, that concludes our report for the study session.
Thank you very much, and thanks for the student housing team for making such a thoughtful presentation and being so organized. I'm sure we will be, in my pending schedule, we will be seeing you or talking to you all very, very soon.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Bye.
Bye. Thank you, Ben. We have to do some, some more fun stuff. Opportunity to go through some special recognitions. And our first one is, in particularly, very fun to do because it is honoring our student trustee, David Soto Gonzalez. And student trustee Soto Gonzalez, we've been, it's been a great pleasure to serve on this board with you, and you brought tremendous insight and really valued opinion and to the board, and we really appreciate all the time that you've dedicated to the college and the community. So thank you very much on behalf of the entire board. And we have a resolution for you, which I'd like to go over and read a few lines of, if you, if you'd indulge me. Whereas David Soto Gonzalez was elected to serve as a student member of the Napa Valley College Board of Trustees and represent the associated students of the college to bring a very positive change in the college community as a student leader. And he has worked tirelessly in his advocacy for student success and his thoughtful approach has helped him to attain personal and professional goals while holding himself to the highest standard of behavior. Excuse me. I'm getting another, I'm on my iPad and getting a call, sorry, David. While holding himself to the highest standard of behavior as an elected official. David is influential among his peers, and he is instrumental in enhancing the student-centric focus of the board as asked incredibly thoughtful and provocative questions and has really done a tremendous job collaborating with the rest of the board. And his dedication, inquiring mind and collegial work style and diligent service has been a tremendous value to the college, the board, and student body. And, and David, we appreciate everything that you've done, all the time you've dedicated to the board, the college and the community. So I would like to take an opportunity to actually do a vote. And unless there is, do we have any public comments on this, Catherine?
No, I have received none. I'm not sure that David is here. David, are you here?
Did he leave?
He was here earlier.
I see he's not here.
Yeah, we're just
Easy. I'm still here. Hi, and thank you so very much for the kind words. I really did feel like I learned a lot here, being the board trustee. And sorry for the background noise.
No, it's wonderful. And trustee Baker?
Yeah, I just wanted to, it's always, it always jars me when, when, when our student trustee leaves what feels like in the middle of the year, but I know it's not the middle of the year for him. But just wanted to also acknowledge what a critical role he played in our our search process for hiring, selecting and hiring our new president. So he was, he was our student rep for that and was very, very helpful and brought a great voice to that process as well. And I know that that required, that he take a lot of time away from his other activities and even having to miss classes. So really appreciate that he was able to make that commitment for us.
Thank you, trustee Baker, for mentioning that. That's very important.
So move that we adopt the resolution honoring student trustee David Soto Gonzalez.
Thank you, trustee, and thank you, trustee Rios, for your second. Student trustee Soto Gonzalez, you are recusing yourself from this vote. But I will, that goes to trustee But I will go to trustee Baldini.
Hi.
Trustee Goth.
Hi.
Trustee Rios.
Hi.
Trustee Baker.
Aye.
Trustee Deluna.
Aye, and thank you for your service, David.
Trustee Iverson. Not present. And I will vote aye as well. David, thank you so much. And you know, if, if there is, as you can move on to the next steps beyond the college, you know, you have seven tremendous supporters that have your back 100% of the way. And if there's anything that we can do to support you, you, please just let us know what we can do and, and, and we will be on it right away. We want to support you in any way possible.
Thank you guys so much. No, that was very great. And thank you for those kind words once again. It was really fun being on the board and everything and just, you know, seeing everyone and learning stuff, even though, you know, it's not my, what is it called? Not my career, but still it was fun. And I guess I do have one question for everyone. What is it? You guys prefer UC Berkeley or UCLA?
Oh. I like Berkeley.
Berkeley.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
I like it. It's a great deal then. Yeah, those are great options. Congratulations.
Yeah, thank you.
That's incredible. That's incredible. Congratulations.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you.
And well, that's a good, good way to start the meeting. We'll move on to action, another action item 4.2, which is our annual review and approval of privileges granted to our student trustee. As included in board policy 2015, which Catherine will pull up right now. And we review on an annual basis. Is there any public comment on this item, Catherine?
No, I have received none. Can you see this window, the BP?
Yes, we can.
Great.
Well, I would welcome a motion to continue to adopt this as our board policy for our student trustee.
So moved.
Thank you trustee Baldini.
A second.
Thank you trustee Goth. And student trustee, Soto Gonzalez, you can vote on this one. So I will call on you first. Trustee Baldini.
Hi.
Trustee Goth.
Aye.
Trustee Rios.
Aye.
Trustee Baker.
Aye.
Trustee Deluna.
Aye.
Trustee Iverson. And not present. And I will vote aye as well. Moving on to an information item, item 4.3, Associated Students of Napa Valley College Officer Recognition. Oscar Haro, are you going to, sorry, is Ben here?
Yes, I'm here.
Oh, great. Welcome, Ben.
Good afternoon, everyone. I know we are on time, so I want to say a few things and I want to have Marcus Texan say a few words as well. In regards to the Associated Students of Napa Valley College Officer Recognition, certificates of appreciation are being awarded to the current student government officers. These student government officers have performed their duties in an exemplary and highly professional manner. Their efforts in student advocacy, production of student-led events and shared governance has had a direct impact on student life and has contributed to the success of the Office of Student Life and the Associated Students Leadership Program. I'd like to name off the individuals in the student government, which is the ASNBC Board of 2011, 2021 and 2022. And that is Marcus Texan, President, David Soto Gonzalez, Student Trustee, Janelle Camarino, Events Coordinator, Victor Cruz, Secretary, Erica Arroyo, Treasurer, Isabella Tiscano, Senator at Large, Mariah San Jose, Senator at Large, Yuzby Jimenez, Senator at Large, and Jeff Suriaco, Senator at Large. Now I wanted to take a few minutes just to kind of talk about this group. I have been at this college for nine years in the Associated Students. This group is by far one of the top groups I've ever had the pleasure of advising. They were not only dealing with a pandemic, but we were having, but we had an ASNBC officer who was a dual enrolled student taking on a leadership role. That is something that was a first that we've ever had done here at the college. The other thing is that whether there was a pandemic or not, the student government was very active when it came to policies and procedures as well as being trained and being an informed citizen and doing the leadership tasks necessary as if the pandemic didn't happen. They actually also did several events, whether they were virtual or in person, and they helped ATC on one of their main events this spring, which was their first event, which was a club gathering. So all in all, the team as a whole worked very well together. They performed adverbly. And I wanted to give this time to recognize Marcus. Their leadership and all the work to create their bylaws, this group actually did it in a semester. So that's another big thing. So what I would like to do is kind of relieve the rest of my time.
Great, Ben. Ben, did you want to relay the, the rest of your time? Did you want to pass it off to, to Marcus? Is Marcus here? I see him, I see him as a panelist, but I just.
Yes.
There you are, Marcus. Excuse me. I'm on a very small screen over here.
I just wanted to go over the activities and everything each board member has done over this past academic year, starting off with student trustee David Soto Gonzalez. Not only has he served as our student trustee, but he also served in different capacities in student clubs throughout his terms. David has made contributions to events and, events planning and represented ASNBC at the ASAC Conference in Washington DC. David also assisted in planning and volunteered at ASNBC events from Club Rush to the Spooktacular Halloween event. Many of our student round events can be attributed to events coordinator Janelle Camarino. Janelle has led the development and planning of the club, of the Club Rush, the ASNBC portion of the graduation reception, and again, the Spooktacular Halloween event. Secretary Victor Cruz is one of the key players of ASNBC, publishing our minutes to help ensure proper record keeping. He also serves on the Diversity, Equity and Inclusivity Committee where he heavily contributed to student participation in crafting a more inclusive campus. Treasurer Erica Arroyo is responsible for tracking our finances both semesters. Erica's formed comprehensive budgets while also volunteering at events such as Club Rush and serving on several hiring committees throughout her term. Senator at Large Isabella Tiscano joined ASNBC this semester, but still volunteered at Club Rush and other ASNBC events as a student. Isabella also heavily assisted in outreach and retention during her short, short, short term here in the ASNBC Board 21, 2021, 2022, reaching out to students and making videos to recruit new student leaders. Senator at Large Mario V. San Jose also joined ASNBC this semester partnering with Isabella. They both researched methods for improving campus wifi and also assisted in outreach and retention for student leaders. Second to last, Senator at Large Yuzby Jimenez formally served as the president of ASNBC last year. This year she took the lead in planning and organizing the Washington DC trip in addition to representing ASNBC at the ASAC Conference. Aside from volunteering at Club Rush and other ASNBC events, Yuzby had also provided ASNBC insight into fundraising and assisted the group in updating our Click and Pledge site for DAS. Lastly, Senator at Large Jeff Suriaco is a dual enrolled high school student from American Canyon High School who also has joined ASNBC this semester alongside Isabella and Mariah. Jeff has worked on reaching out to local high schools regarding volunteers and positions at ASNBC, essentially what it means to be a student advocate and a leader, and helped research information to help gain, gain insight into student housing. These are our members of the ASNBC Board of 2021 and 2022, and I'm incredibly grateful for their hard work during their term. Without them, we wouldn't have been able to accomplish everything we have done. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Marcus. Ben, excuse me, I'm juggling a few kids right now without a whole bunch of help. So excuse me if you hear some background noise. And but Marcus, thank you for everything that you've done, everything that ASNBC has done. It's been, as, as Mr. Casada alluded to, you guys have had a very, very impressive year under really challenging circumstances and you guys have thrived and persisted throughout that. So congratulations and really well done. And conveying the same thing that, you know, we shared with student trustee Soto Gonzalez, if there's anything that we can do to support you and support any other members of ASNBC, please let us know. We would love to be there to support you and the rest of the team, you know, throughout the years moving forward. So please don't hesitate to reach out. We will move on to a special recognitions and, and trustee Baldini, if you don't mind, if I could kick this off to you to lead for a bit. I would appreciate it while I need to step away from the computer. Trustee Baldini, are you there?
Yes, I am, sir. I'll take a premiere.
And I'm sorry for throwing this on, on your lap last minute, but yeah, please, please excuse me.
Thanks very much. Family first there. So moving on to, to recognitions, 5.1 Nursing Program Resolution in Honor of National Nurses Week. So we have a, again, a, an action item, a resolution to acknowledge and honor the nurse faculty full and full-time and adjunct, the Associate Degree in Nursing Program, the Vocational Nursing Program, the Psychiatric Technician Program, the EMS Program and other nurses at Napa Valley College. It's, it's a great honor to present this and among my nieces and nephews, I have seven nurses and one nurse practitioner, another one off to Boise State for, for the bachelor's program up there. And all have been passed at Napa Valley College. Many had their beginnings here with, with courses. So, so thank you. Do we have a, a motion and a second?
So moved.
Again, you know.
We have a first by trustee Baker and a second and by by Deluna. Trustee Soto Gonzalez, how do you vote?
Aye.
Trustee Baker?
Aye.
Trustee Rios?
Aye.
Trustee Goth?
Aye.
And trustee Deluna?
Aye.
And Chair Dodd is back. How do you vote, sir?
I, I vote aye as well.
The resolution passes. I'll just read a, a few few paragraphs from the resolution honoring the National Nurses Week. Whereas the Napa Valley College Associate Degree in Nursing Program was started at the request of the community, which expressed a need for registered nurses and whereas the Napa Valley College Associate Degree in Nursing Program admitted its first class of students in 1970. And since 1990, National Nurses Week is celebrated annually from May 6, which is known as National Recognition Day for Nurses through May 12, which is the birthday of Florence Nightingale, the founder of modern nursing. And it's, as an aside, here we are back in that part of the world and a, and a, and a struggle. And that's where Florence Nightingale began in the Crimea War. Whereas National Nurses Week is a time of year to reflect on the important contributions that nurses in our local, state, national and international communities have made to provide safe, high-quality enduring healthcare during the COVID-19 pandemic. And whereas the nurses of the faculty and staff of the Associate Degree in Nursing Program, the Vocational Nursing Program, the Psychiatric Technician Program, the Emergency Medical Services Program and the Napa Valley College Student Health Center have continued to provide high-quality education, collaboration, consultation, the in-person interactions throughout the COVID-19 pandemic. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Trustees and the entire college community join to acknowledge and honor the nursing faculty and staff, both full-time and adjunct of the Associate Degree in Nursing Program, the Vocational Nursing Program, the Psych Psychiatric Technician Program, the EMS Program and the Student Health Center at Napa Valley College, adopted as you heard this day at the regular meeting on May 12, 2022. Thank you. I turn it back to you, Chair Dodd.
Thank you trustee Baldini. And yeah, mother-in-law is here who is also a former nurse and is very much a saint who is coming in to rescue, save me right now. But thank you for saving me too, trustee Baldini.
Well, I think that saints and nurses go hand in hand. They're pretty much one of the same.
We'll move on to information item 5.2, Outstanding Napa Valley College Storm Athletes.
Trustee Dodd, Jerry Dunlap is supposed to present and he's not here yet. We're running a tiny bit early, but we could move on to Phi Theta Kappa. Kathy Gillis is here.
Okay, great. I'll keep an eye, I'll keep an eye on panelists and attendees to see when she gets here. But that sounds like a great idea. So we will table 5.2 and move on to 5.3. Phi Theta Kappa Awards, which is always a lot of fun to do. And Dr. Parker, are you going to be introducing, is Kathy is going to be leading the conversation?
Kathy Gillis.
Great. Hi Kathy, please, please take it away.
Thank you. Hi, everybody. And thank you so much for your support of our students and the Honor Society. I want to especially thank the president's office for supporting the honor students being able to have access to the international conference that they have every year. So that was a wonderful thing. Thank you so much for that. And I want to also echo what Ben said earlier about the challenges our students have faced and how well they have done despite the fact that they've been working remotely or have many other obstacles. They still had meetings and now I'm talking about the Honor Society students, particularly the officers. I don't think my students really had a chance to get here on time. I see one of my students is here, but I don't know if, if Afnan is here, who I wanted to call out in particular. But they, the same, had meetings when they could. They had a lot of virtual meetings. It was very hard to recruit, just like it was for, I know, the other student groups. Despite all of that, you can see here, they won lots of awards at the regional conference, which comprises all of California and Nevada, all the chapters and all the community colleges of the two-year honors institute, honors society. And in particular, Afnan was called out as a most distinguished officer. And I was particularly proud of their work with the homeless community that they did in the Napa County. They went over to Kennedy Park. They went over to some other encampments and were able to supply the populations there with what they called survival kits, which were the things that, you know, herd to come by when you don't have a home, such as, you know, toiletries. They, they gave them emergency blankets and other things, all in like a little backpack. So that was really amazing. And they got a scholarship and to pay for that through the Honor Society by applying for it. And their description of what they wrote is what gleaned them the $1,000 to supply, to get those supplies. Also, they managed to do a lot of research last summer culminating in these awards. So they were writing research papers. They were, they were researching. They were writing the papers and they were carrying on these events all at the same time. So under all of this situation. So I really want to commend them for that, all of our students. And I want to also just acknowledge that we had two all California winners that are representing Napa Valley College at the, the state level. And the CCC League normally puts on a, I don't know if they had one Catherine this year, but they usually have a, a honors sort of a banquet that's in conjunction with Phi Theta Kappa, but I don't know that that happened this year. But the two students who were honored and represent our college are Victoria Zaffra and Joshua Exkeville. And they are both exemplary students and I have a longer description of them. And I have a longer description of them, if should be wanted. But thank you so much. And see if Afnan just got here, in case you want to talk to him. If you have any questions.
I just brought him in. He's in.
Oh, great. So Afnan is our special, he really carried, he was our president, and so he carried this officer through these very difficult times. So I'd love for you to acknowledge him or talk to him if you'd like.
Afnan, would you like to make any comments? Talk about your experience with Phi Theta Kappa this year?
Yes, of course. First, I'd like to thank you for giving us the opportunity and honoring us in this way. The last year was quite tough. Not only everything went virtual. We had a lot of members that, you know, left the board. They had, like, stress about all the other things that was going on in their lives. And so it was hard to keep the team together. But, you know, even just us three to four members, we were able to complete the project. And I think it's all down to how we were able to distribute the workload. And there's one thing I would like to talk about, like the college project that we were working on. We're working on this college project regarding digital signage, installing more digital monitors on campus, because we felt like there was a communication gap between the students and the faculty and staff. There was not much information related to the students, and students didn't know about what was going on on campus. And one of the things that we realized that the digital monitors on campus that were actually used were not efficiently being used. And we worked with Holly Dawson as well to, you know, provide our perspective from the students and how to use them in a more effective way. And we worked with the IT department a lot. But unfortunately, I think there was a lot of changes in the IT department. We're working with Roger Clegg, who was the former VP of IT. So we couldn't get the project done. The only thing left was the proposal. But hopefully, if the next board continues with this project, we would like to propose a proposal to the board for, to install more digital monitors. Given the financial circumstances, it might be hard. But still, there might be a lot of potential in that area in improving, especially in technology. But overall, it was a really good experience. And I would like to thank everyone, all the staff, all the faculty who helped us during this process. And because they were quite cooperative with us and helped us throughout the process. So that's all I'd say. Thank you.
Thank you. And the collage of families is kind of legendary throughout Napa Valley College. Isn't that right, Kathy?
Absolutely. Your former trustee, student trustee, former winner also. They just keep winning.
You guys are amazing. Family is amazing. Thank you very much, Afnan. And I appreciate your team's efforts with respect to monitors. I'm sorry, it didn't totally realize itself, but it's definitely on our radars. And the other board hears you with that concern because it's a, it's a very worthwhile objective and something worth thinking about, too. So, thank you. And thank you very much, Kathy. I will, I don't see Jerry here yet. So I will go on to our Administrative Confidential Employee of the Year. And I do see Maria Villagomez, who is going to introduce this item.
Thank you so much. Good evening, trustees, colleagues, students, and community members. Robert Harris, Senior Dean of Health and Safety, has been selected as the Administrative Confidential Employee of the Year for 2021, 2022. Bob has been an employee at Napa Valley College for almost a decade and was nominated by many of his colleagues for his commitment to the college, the staff in the Health and Safety divisions with whom he works, and for his tireless commitment to the students. He has been recognized for the leadership he has given to support the ideas of education and training success of students in his areas and for leading his department with respect, always taking into consideration what others have to say. Bob's nomination letters mention the work he has done beyond his division to include work in the Administrative Senate, the care team, and the Rotary Club, among other areas. Below are only a few direct quotes from Bob's nomination letters. Bob has shown leadership in the Health and Safety divisions for the past couple of years as we have been working our way through the pandemic. In the five years this person worked with him, Bob has been a constant source of support. Bob has worked to preserve solidarity with constituent group leaders while effectively representing his own constituent group. He demonstrates commitment to uphold the spirit of collaboration that strengthens the college community. Personally, I'd like to congratulate Bob also for the work and the vulnerability he has shown as we continue our discussions on equity, diversity, and inclusion coordinated by Academic Affairs and the Office of Patricia Unsumi. Congratulations, Bob. I'm being selected the Administrator Confidential Employee of the Year. Thanks to everyone who nominated, who sent in nominated letters, nomination letters, and please join me in congratulating Bob. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Maria, for that really thoughtful, for the thoughtful comments on Bob. Full-heartedly agree. And I wish we were here, wish he was here. But I know he's taking some well-deserved, well-deserved time. And I'm glad, I'm glad he's doing that. And we'll all be happy to give him congratulations next month when he's here. And to item 5.5, which is an action item. It's a granting of emeritus status. Catherine, could you actually open up the list of our retiring staff members?
Okay.
Who applied for? Thank you. And we have seven, partially 11 individuals who have applied for emeritus status. And to proceed with this, we'll need a motion in a second. But first, I'll ask if there's any public comment. Catherine?
No, I haven't received any public comment.
Well, I would welcome a motion to approve emeritus status for these 10 individuals.
Baldini, so move.
Second?
Thank you. Trustee Baldini and Trustee Baker. Student trustee Soto Gonzalez. You are on mute, and I will come back to you.
Sorry, aye.
No, no, that's fine. It happens. How do you vote, a trustee, student trustee?
Oh, aye.
Thank you. Trustee Baldini?
Aye.
Trustee Goff?
Aye.
Trustee Rios?
Aye.
Trustee Baker?
Aye.
Trustee Deluna?
Aye.
Trustee Iverson, not present. And I will yes on this as well. And congratulations to our emeritus members.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay.
Great. And I think another fun one is just acknowledging and just seeing this incredible tenure of a lot of these wonderful people who have served the college, some for over 40 years, which is just absolutely incredible. And, you know, I think we're, I know we're going to be doing something special for our retirees on May 19, and I'm hoping everybody received that calendar invitation that went out to join us. And what we're going to do, we'll read the resolution today, but I would like to all do it together on May 19 for those trustees that can participate. And Catherine, is there any public comment on this acknowledgement and resolution?
I have not received any. And we also have, we will be issuing certificates of appreciation, which you will sign, for the, for those who have under 15 years of service.
Great, great.
And the resolutions are here.
Thank you. Well, I'd welcome a motion.
Baldini, so move.
Nina, second?
Thank you, Trustee Baldini and Trustee Luna for your second. Student trustee Soto Gonzalez?
Aye.
Trustee Baldini?
Aye.
Trustee Goff?
Aye.
Trustee Rios?
Aye.
Trustee Baker?
Aye.
Trustee Deluna?
Aye.
Trustee Iverson, absent. And I will vote aye as well. Going to item 5.7, the Dr. Ed Shank Excellence in Student Service Award. Oscar?
Yes, thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you much, and good afternoon. Yesterday afternoon, we celebrated the recipient of the Dr. Ed Shank Excellence in Student Service Award. And it was a, it was a great, great ceremony that we all enjoyed. It was about 27 people that accompanied us. Among those included three of our trustees, Trustee Baker, Trustee Rios, and Trustee Deluna. So I want to thank you very much for that. Maria Ramos, Maria Ramos Tamayo is the recipient of this year's award. And Maria has been working in the Office of Student Affairs as the Head Mission Assistant. But also, she's had a short tenure working in the President's Office. And Dr. Frost was also part of this ceremony that we had. And he offered some very kind words of workmanship and her abilities. But Maria was nominated, first and foremost, because of her exceptional work in customer service and attending to the needs of not only students, but the public in general. She's been, she's been an asset to the Office of Student Affairs. But more importantly, she's been an asset to the entire unit of Student Affairs. One of the comments that was made as part of her nomination is, it says, as Maria demonstrates excellence in serving students and encourages student achievement each and every day in the Office of Student Affairs, first and foremost by being present on a consistent basis, taking the hell when needed, and always graciously helping everyone, from students to colleagues, to instructors, to administrators, with important and urgent issues. And I've never been around Maria where she did demonstrate all of these qualities. And that was just one of the several comments that were made, made of her, I mean, about her. So again, it was my great pleasure to also have Dr. Ed Shank present. He shared a bit about the award itself and the foundation and genesis of the award. And again, as I mentioned, this is the third year. And we're very proud to have, to have presented it to Maria Ramos Tamayo. Thank you.
Thank you, Oscar. I don't see Maria here. But definitely want to echo your comments as well, getting to work with her very closely. I think over the past four or five months, I mean, she's been really impressive to work with. You're a real pleasure, and it's really been a tremendous support, I know, to the President's Office and also to the board, too. So, yeah, looking forward to seeing her and shaking her hand in person.
Thank you.
To next item at 5.8, the McPherson Distinguished Teaching Award. Sarah Parker?
Hi, good evening. The McPherson Distinguished Teaching Award. I want to start with just a very brief history, inaugurated in 1987, acknowledging the belief that the quality of education relates directly to the caliber of teaching. The original announcement of the award stated, "The McPherson Distinguished Teaching Awards will recognize the outstanding performance of teaching faculty who demonstrate excellence in instruction and who provide outstanding service to students. The achievements of the individuals selected will exemplify Napa Valley College's philosophical commitment and dedication to excellence in instruction and quality service to students. And out of a pool of incredibly strong candidates, after much deliberation, the committee identified two individuals this year. We had a beautiful reception last week to celebrate our awardees for the 2021 winners. And here tonight, I am going to briefly reiterate my congratulations to nursing professor Janice Ankman and instructor of mathematics, Michael Campbell. The attached program gives some additional details about them. But I want to just frame that, those specifics with the general notes that they exemplify the characteristics and traits that define what's amazing about community colleges. They're supportive, they're collaborative, they're responsive, they're inclusive, they are present. And it was a privilege getting to know both of them a little bit better through the nomination process and through the celebration. This is from the program. Janice is known as a talented and pragmatic instructor who advocates strongly for the art and science of nursing and holds the students to a strict standard with concern for the student, the program, and the profession. She is actually here tonight, so I want to offer her, before moving to Michael Campbell, the opportunity if she'd like to say anything.
That'd be wonderful.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, yes.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Thank you. I've been talking all day, so I have no voice. Sorry. I've been lecturing and running through the Sim Lab. I wanted to thank everybody. I am very honored to get this award, and I certainly did not expect it in any way, shape, or form. But I do what I love, and I guess I will keep doing what I love until I'm too old to do it anymore. So, thank you.
Thank you so much. Congratulations.
Thank you.
And thank you for being here tonight. Our second winner this year was Michael Campbell. And again, from the program, just a brief snippet, Michael embodies the mathematics department mission to ensure that all students receive the instruction and support necessary to become confident, independent, and successful lifelong learners capable of achieving their academic and professional goals. So congratulations once again to both of our winners this year. It was wonderful to be able to celebrate with you and all of those who were able to attend. Thanks again to the nomination committee and to the foundation for the role that they played in the process and also in organizing the reception.
Thank you so much, Dr. Parker.
And we have Jerry Dunlap here now. So I've gone back up to athletics.
Fantastic. So yeah, we'll move backwards for item 5.2, our outstanding college athletes. Jerry, will you go ahead if you're there?
Awesome. Thank you, Trustee Dodd. And thank you for having us here. And I'm so sorry I'm late. I was with the parents of one of our basketball recruits coming in from Rodriguez and drove home as fast as I could. Sorry I'm late, so.
No, no, glad you do. That's a good excuse.
Yeah, no, no, it's going well. So yeah, it's a great time of the year. We always get to present some of our outstanding scholar athletes from the college. So we put a little presentation together. So Catherine, next slide, please. So every year, we always talk about the academic success and what it requires to be a student athlete at the community college level. All of our student athletes are required to be a full-time student. And in order to participate in intercollegiate athletics, they must complete nine units of academic classes as a minimum, pass 24 units, and have a 2-point, a grade point average to play the second season. Our student athletes this past year, on average, completed 12.6 units in the fall of '21 with a grade point average of 2.1 throughout the entire program. We were very pleased to see that we had 44 student athletes with a grade point average of 3.0 or higher. And so we thought it'd be nice just to list, and we got their blessings when they do well academically to promote their names and their GPAs. So you can see the list of student athletes that did extremely well this year. Amari Hamilton and Amari Bennett will probably next year be put up for Academic All-Americans and through the state of California as well. They're stellar athletes and great GPAs. Alexa Larson is one of our better women's golfers, so forth. So you can see that we did extremely well. So you can see that we did extremely well academically as well, as well as athletically this year. A.J. McMahon, three point seven-five baseball player, was, I believe he was the eighth in the state in home runs and has received a scholarship to move on next year as well, to, to move on intercollegially and play athletics at the next level. Next slide. Sorry I'm rushing, but I know you have a lot to discuss this evening.
It's fine, Jerry.
Athletic Department, obviously going through COVID, the past few years, we were extremely fortunate. We were, we were one of the programs, I believe, on campus that just really never skipped a beat. We just kind of kept going. And we wanted to thank the following people on our campus to make that possible. Obviously, Dr. Sarah Parker, for all her help. Bob Harris is the dean over our division, gives us tremendous support. We had to test student athletes on a regular basis, much more than we do, did our students on our campus. So without the help of Nancy and Jasmine in the Health Center, we, we wouldn't have been able to do this. So I can't give them enough thanks and enough credit for helping our student athletes get through the past two years. Chief Wade and the Campus Police, they're always there for us, often in good situations, but they do help us when things go bad. And they're just a phone call away and are there. Matt Christensen and all the Facilities Department, without them, you know, we, we couldn't make things run. Our, our facilities are in really good condition right now, and we're very proud of what they've been doing the past few years. Patty Morgan, Morgan has helped us tremendously with financial aid, and we're starting to get more involved with that with our student athletes, so we want to thank Patty. Robin Darkangelo has helped our athletic department tremendously this past year with a lot of good things and helped us out with some equipment in our training room facility, which we see over three hundred patients a month in our training facility, our, our, you know, physical rehabbing. So we want to thank Robin. Brandon Lucas and Tracy Oyama are certified athletic trainers. They work countless hours. They work well above, and I hope Charles is not listening, above the amount of time they're supposed to be working. They're there all the time, and, you know, we couldn't do it without them. Mike Ronald is our equipment manager, and Lauren Farmer is our, our administrative assistant. Again, do yeoman's work and are there for all the time whenever we need them. And then Rodney Webster and the entire Napa Valley College Counseling Department have been tremendous, especially during COVID when things were a little, little tough for us being online. They made time to meet with us and our student athletes to get them in the correct classes and keep them eligible. We did not lose anybody to eligibility again this year, so we were extremely proud of that. We had one little instance where a young lady decided to redshirt, but that was kind of out of our control, but stayed with our program and was there every day to be at practice and to make, make it to the game. So we're very thankful for, for everything that Napa Valley College is doing for the athletic department. And again, just being with the parents tonight, our, our program is growing. We're going to have more student athletes participate next year than we did this year. So during these times, we're starting to have really good success, so we're excited about the future. We're excited for housing to come in, and we're just going to keep plugging along. And I want to thank all of you for having us tonight and acknowledging the academic success of our student athletes.
Thank you, Jerry, and thank you for your tremendous leadership. I mean, it really shows with all these successes, especially with our scholar athletes. That incredible list of forty-four student athletes. Let's say that's, that's tremendous. So thank you very much, and thank you very much for being here, and thank you very much for multitasking and juggling from recruiting to jumping into a board meeting and making this wonderful presentation.
Thank you. Anytime.
And we will move on to six, item six, public comment on closed session items. At this time, the board will devote a total of up to fifteen minutes to hear comments regarding closed session agenda items. Individual comments will be limited to three minutes. Catherine, do we have any public comment on, on closed session?
No, I have not received any.
Thank you. At this time, the board will move into closed session covering the following items. Item seven point one, honorary degree. Item seven point two, conference with labor negotiators. And item seven point three, public employee performance evaluation. And we anticipate returning approximately in an hour, which will be approximately six thirty-eight, but we may, goal is ideally we can get back here right at the scheduled time at six thirty. Great. The board is returning back from closed session at six forty-three. There are no announcements from closed session. We'll move on to the public comment, the general public comment. And this is an opportunity governed by the California Brown Act. By definition, this is an opportunity to hear public concerns, perspectives, and differing vantage points. The board is not able, under the Brown Act, to engage in any level of conversation or discussion, but we look forward to this opportunity to gather community input. At this time, the board will devote up to fifteen minutes to review comment to the board on any item that is not appearing on our agenda this evening, but over which the board has jurisdiction. No action or discussion will occur at this time on any public comment items, and each comment shall last no longer than three minutes. I know I have two public comments to read that have been presented in writing, have been requested to be read out loud, which I will do. I also believe that we have two attendees, which I'll let go first. And I see Danielle Alexander's hands raised and Shree Marcus' hands raised. And Catherine, if you could admit them as one at a time, as the panelists can start with Danielle, and then we'll move on to Shree.
Okay, I have enabled Danielle's microphone. Looks like she's ready.
Okay, awesome. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, thank you. I'm reading this public comment on behalf of Mary Robinette from the Math Success Center, who couldn't be here tonight. So I'll just read her statement. Good evening. I appreciate the opportunity to share some important thoughts with you. I realize that you cannot help us if you do not know what is going on. In that spirit, I would like you to know how the changes pertaining to the return to campus rule will affect the students, tutors, and operations of the Math Success Center. We've been notified that as of August first, the Math Success Center will be fully open in person. For us, this means that we will resume our in-person, full-time tutoring while also maintaining our rigorous online tutoring offerings. The peculiar development here is that we've been told that the fully online tutors will be required to come to campus to tutor online students online from the Math Success Center. There are several problems with this. First, since we will be fully operational with in-person tutoring, with a lot of talking and noise in the Math Success Center, there is a possibility that tutors will have to use their personal computers and headphones in one very small room with no ventilation, no access to windows, and with an unknown filtration system. To further disrupt matters, the use of this one room for online tutoring will eliminate the availability of the room, which is a testing room for the Math Success Center. This room has heretofore been used to administer, proctor, and grade math and chemistry quizzes. There are approximately nine in-person math classes and approximately thirty-one online math classes being offered in fall twenty twenty-two. Online students depend upon online tutoring. This allows flexibility to the students. They can pop in from their cars, from work, from home with their children, and receive real-time help with their math difficulties. Online students do not seek in-person tutoring. They seek online tutoring, and that tutoring does not need to be headquartered on campus. The flexibility that remote tutoring offers to our students extends to our tutors themselves. Several of our tutors are, of course, pursuing their own educations. A requirement that they tutor via the computer from the Math Success Center rather than from their own schools, jobs, or homes places an enormous burden on them. They will have to choose between commuting to Napa to work on the computer or their own educations. They will, of course, have to choose their educations and jobs, and we will lose these excellent tutors who are an enormous asset to our struggling math students. We face a tremendous loss if we do this. Online tutoring absolutely does not need to be done from the Math Success Center. This is an outdated mode of thinking that does not serve our students or our tutors. In fact, it is difficult to understand how this decision was arrived upon. Just to reiterate, the people who have made these decisions are expecting student tutors to commute to campus to tutor students from thirty-one online math classes online, but only to conduct the tutoring from the Math Success Center. We ask for your assistance in helping with this matter. Allowing online tutors to work remotely as they have been since the pandemic began is the most efficient choice. Allowing them more time and flexibility to dedicate their time to tutoring students versus spending their valuable time commuting and sitting in traffic. Furthermore, working remotely will save our tutors money, especially with the atrocious gasoline prices. If you have any power over this decision, please allow for some flexibility for online tutors to work remotely so they can better accommodate their own college classes as well as focus on accommodating those students that want to access the MSC online tutoring services. Without the virtual tutoring flexibility, the MSC could definitely lose some of our most valuable tutors. Thank you, and it's signed Mary Robinette from the Math Success Center, Lead Instructional Support Specialist. Thank you. That's all.
Thank you, Danielle, and thank you for, for reading the comment on behalf of your colleague. Shree. Marcus.
Hi, everyone. Hope all is well. It was nice to see some of you last week. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can. It's good to see you too, Shree.
All right, so I'm reaching out. I'm going to read what I wrote in an email, verbatim.
Now you're, now you're muted, Shree.
And you're still on mute, Shree.
There we go. We're good?
We are good.
Okay, I'm reaching, I'm going to read verbatim an email that I wrote after receiving the email about returning back on campus and for the vaccine mandate to still be in place for the fall semester. I am reaching out with the utmost respect and care as both an alumni of Napa Valley College and as a classified employee. Personally, I have had an exemption on file this whole time and have remained negative with COVID warnings going on in the fifteen-hundred building. From what healthcare professionals, including the ones on mainstream media, are saying, this virus is not going away. It will continue to mutate, and we will just have to figure out a way to live with it. There are a lot of adverse reactions listed on the CDC website as well. I had to drill down for information, but I was able to find some numbers in the information pasted below, and I'll be able to share this with you all after, or it should be printed, as I gave it to Catherine. There is anaphylaxis, thrombosis, and even death. Sorry for all the snapshots, but I've followed this information since day one. No matter how small the percentage is, there are still, there is still a chance of these adverse reactions and even death happening. It would greatly benefit the board if the board, it would, it would be beneficial for the board if they revisited the resolution that was made in December of twenty twenty-one so that it matches what the new guidance says, and so that students, along with employees, don't feel like they're being taken advantage of while having their civil liberties cast aside. I give up my Fourth Amendment every time that I get tested. I do that voluntarily because I've been actually getting tested since before the resolution was created. I know there are many students that felt this same way, students that stopped coming to our school and probably will never come back because of this. I feel bad for them, and I feel bad for us. Our enrollment will continue to dwindle if we try to control a populace of mostly adults. Thank you for listening.
Thank you very much, Shree, for taking the time to join us.
Have a good night.
You too. You too. I have two public comments to read, and the first one.
Excuse me, trustee Dodd, we have another public comment. Richard Portman.
Oh, please, Mr. Portman.
Hello, everybody. I hope everybody's well. I just wanted to bring attention to the criminal, fraudulent, wasteful, and abusive use of the HRF emergency fundage that was spent on the Board of Trustees' meeting room that none of you are currently using. Upwards of sixty thousand dollars was used to outfit that so that you could use it during an emergency. None of you are using it again.
Do you have anything? Is that it, Richard? I don't want to cut you off.
No, that's it. I could extrapolate it upon there, but for fear of retroaction, because it is criminal in nature, I don't want to extrapolate upon it. I'll continue to seek action elsewhere. Thank you. I've also received no feedback on it from this very Board of Trustees. So you have multiple employees that are calling you criminal, fraudulent, and wasteful and abusive of emergency funding. It's such an emergency that we need to vaccinate and forcibly vaccinate our student and classified populations because it's that dangerous. How dare you? How dare you? And then what's going to happen is, no, there's going to be no follow-up to this. I won't hear from any of you. I doubt it. I hope that I do.
Thank you, Richard.
Thank you, Jeff Dodd.
And we do, we will be meeting our first board meeting in person, using the new system actually in, in June. So I hope you'll be happy to, pleased to hear that, Richard, and thank you for your comment. Appreciate it. We all do. I have two public comments to read aloud that were submitted in writing. And the first one I'm going to read is from Joshua Maria. Dear Napa Valley College Board of Trustees, I wish to express great concerns with the board's decision to compel all classified employees to return to campus in the fall. The demand feels punitive and capricious. As we've seen over the last two years, there are a number of positions that can be performed partially or fully in a remote capacity. This option has eased several burdens for many employees, the most notable being the need to commute to work. Commuting drains employees' time and resources, as well as contributes to man-made greenhouse gases. It is my understanding that the classified union has submitted a request to bargain for a remote work policy, but this request, excuse me, but this request does not appear to have much momentum behind it in the district's current environment. However, it's also my understanding that the board is fully capable of extending the emergency remote work policy past August first, and by doing so, they can make time for a more permanent remote work policy to be hammered out. I humbly request that the board do just that. Sincerely, Joshua Maria. On this comment, I don't have an author, oh, excuse me, it's assigned. Good evening. This is from Diana Calderon. Good evening, members of the Board of Trustees. My name is Diana Calderon, and this is my second semester at Napa Valley College. I want to start off by mentioning how COVID has impacted all of us in different ways, from having our education in person to a computer screen, and from teaching in the classroom to teaching at home. It is a challenge that not just us students face, but teachers as well. At the beginning, we all had no choice but to do online learning. Based on my experience at first, I was happy with online learning as it meant I got to stay home. In a way, I also enjoyed that I was able to study at my own pace. However, once it became a permanent process, I slowly began to feel unsocialized. I miss the feeling of being able to physically interact with our peers and teachers. As safety protocols were being measured, schools were slowly opening and offering in-person learning again. As COVID cases decreased, our campus was able to offer in-person classes with proof of vaccination. Yet, not every class offers in-person classes for unfortunate reasons, or some students are not able to attend because they are not vaccinated. For those who cannot attend in person, I admire how professors go above and beyond in trying to make Zoom feel like. in trying to make Zoom feel like an actual classroom. Although our professors have also been through many hardships during this pandemic, they are very accommodating whenever our students are having problems of our own. Moreover, the counselors at the college are extremely helpful and are always there for us when we need them most. I am in the EOPS program, and I can say it has helped me immensely. I appreciate the meetings we have had with our counselors as they walk me through important events like registration, where they assist me in choosing the best options for our future. Our counselors and professors do not just focus on our education, but also our well-being. Most of my professors do check-ins as an assignment to see how we are doing. I appreciate this a lot. The staff at Napa Valley College has shown me how much they care for us and how they want the best for us all as well. I believe their strategies are important with everything that's been going on. Overall, I appreciate everything I have learned and the opportunities Napa Valley College has offered me so far. And that's from Diana Calderon. That was today's date. Catherine, are there any other public comments?
No, that's all I received.
Okay. Thank you. We'll move on to Action 10.1, Honorary Degree for Mr. Timothy O'Connor. Catherine, is there any public comment on this matter?
I have not received any, and I see no hands raised.
Any questions from the Board?
So move Baldini.
Motion from trustee Baldini. And the second from trustee Rios. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, I will go ahead and do a roll call vote. I will call on First Student Trustee Soto Gonzalez.
Aye.
Trustee Baldini.
Aye.
Trustee Goff.
Aye.
Trustee Rios.
Aye.
Trustee Baker.
Aye.
Trustee Luna.
Aye.
Trustee Iverson is absent, and I will vote aye as well, and approve our first honorary For Action Item 10.2, it's a resolution in support of LGBTQ plus community. Dr. Frost, do you have anything? You know that we have also taken an additional step this year compared to previous years.
I'll keep my words to a minimum. This is a resolution that I strongly support, and I wanna, and I wanna cheer the college community and the trustees, and my office and others for unanimously supporting flying the LGBTQ flag during the month of June for the first time in Napa Valley College history. So thank you all for your support of this important, important matter.
Thank you, Dr. Frost. Well, I will welcome a motion to approve the resolution.
Move approval.
Thank you, trustee Baker.
I'll second.
Thank you, trustee Goff. Any discussion? And you know, excuse me, I forgot to take public comment. Catherine, is there any public comment on this item?
I see no hands raised, and I did not receive any public comment.
Well, I'll do a roll call. Student trustee Soto Gonzalez.
Aye.
Trustee Baldini.
Aye.
Trustee Goff.
Aye.
Trustee Rios.
Aye.
Trustee Baker.
Aye.
Trustee Luna.
Aye.
And trustee Iverson is absent, and I will approve this as well, and recognizing the month of June as Pride Month, in addition to taking, I think, which is kind of like a no-brainer step is to fly the flag, which I'm really proud that we're gonna be doing as a campus community. We will move on to a discussion information item, which will be led by Dr. Wornall, Annual Report and Annual Fiscal Report submissions to the ACCJC.
Thank you, trustee Dodd. And Catherine, Jim Reeves is also, we're kinda tag-teaming on this tonight. I didn't see him in the panel room yet, so maybe you can attend to that while I...
I'll bring him in.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Wornall.
So, good evening, Board. Vice President Jim Reeves and I are here, or soon will be, to share two reports that were submitted to the Accrediting Commission for Community and Junior Colleges, the ACCJC, last month. Although these reports are required by the ACCJC each year, this is the first time that they are being formally presented to the Board as information items. The two reports are the Annual Report, which is affectionately referred to as the AR, and the Annual Fiscal Report, or the AFR. The Annual Report contains data on enrollments and institutional performance metrics for the past three years. The Annual Fiscal Report contains information pertaining to institutional finances for the past three years. And I will share an overview of the AR, and then Jim will do the same for the AFR. So the Annual Report is the mechanism that the ACCJC uses to monitor both enrollment trends and institutional and programmatic performance against our institution's set standards. Between 2018 and 2000, sorry, 2018, 2019, and 2020, 2021, our headcount, and that is credit plus non-credit headcount, decreased by 17.6%. The number of students enrolled in degree-applicable credit courses decreased by 12.3% over the same period, while the number of students enrolled through distance education increased by 123% due to the pandemic and the conscious shift we made toward remote delivery of courses last year, so 2020, 2021. MBC uses the Core Indicators Report, which my office produces each fall, to monitor performance relative to our institution's set standards. And those metrics are, they include successful course completion, degree and certificate attainment, and transfer to UC and CSU institutions. The Core Indicators Report, which was presented to you back in December, is the source for much of the information that we report to the ACCJC in the AR. The ACCJC also collects information on licensure exam pass rates and job placement rates at the program level via the Annual Report. And the actual job placement rates reported for all MBC programs this year exceeded the established standards. The licensure exam pass rates for a couple of health occupation programs dipped below the established standard in 2020, 2021. As is the case each year, the Annual Report has been shared with the Planning and Budget Committee, and the report is posted on the RIPPY website. I also distributed the program-level performance to the academic deans and the vice president of academic affairs so that they can communicate recent performance among program faculty and staff and use it to inform discussion and planning efforts. So with that, I will turn it over to Jim.
Thank you, Dr. Wornell. Good evening, members of the Board and the community. This is the fiscal report for, that is reported to ACCJC. You probably noted from a fiscal perspective, this is, this reflects our financial activity through June 30th of 21, almost a year ago. But that's the ACCJC's timeline. So it does, the numbers won't look new to you, particularly if you're studying the audit. This is a direct reflection of the audit completed, actually, late, late in 21 by my predecessor, Mr. Doug Roberts. The good news is, is that it demonstrates that we are living generally within our means. Our reserves were dropping, but not to a threshold, threshold below their, ACCJC's minimal standards. And I think, again, credit to Mr. Roberts for having, having put that together as a late audit in late 2021. The only thing I would bring to your attention from that report is in section, let's see, section 16, I believe. Yes, section 17, in which we report the number of findings in the audit report. The most recent audit report, we had one finding, and that was we are out of compliance relative to our student-centered funding formula calculations. So we anticipate being able to resolve that finding and move that to zero, hopefully. I would add, and I'm hearing this information quietly, but I think Dr. Wornell may be able to substantiate this, is that based on these financials, we might expect ACCJC to take us off their, their enhanced monitoring condition. This is, again, we're hearing this, we probably won't have it confirmed until the early fall when ACCJC has completed their review of our submission. And as, as Robin has indicated, they probably won't send us a letter, but they probably won't ask us for a follow-up report to determine what we're doing to address the enhanced monitoring. So I, I view that as, as a good indicator, and we'll certainly keep the Board posted on our progress in that direction. So that would conclude my report for the moment.
Thank you, Mr. Reeves. Dr. Wornall, is there anything to add on, on, on your end?
No, if you have any questions, Jim or I can answer them.
Thank you. Any, actually, first, Catherine, do we have any public comment?
No, I'm sorry, we do not.
I mean, I'm not seeing any hands either. Any questions from the trustees?
Actually, I was just curious, have we seen this report before? Not this particular one, but previous versions of this report? Have they been brought to the Board before?
So now, not formally, so this is the first year that we're doing that, that they have been brought to the Planning and Budget Committee in the past, so they are available in Board Docs, but not necessarily as a kind of formalized Board agenda item. And as I guess, kind of Jim alluded to, the, the letter that we received from the ACCJC last fall asking us to provide some information about our financial practices and developing a response letter to indicate our plans to address some of the financial issues, that the trigger for that letter that we received was our AFR that we submitted last year. And so, and then also, as Jim alluded to, the practice of the ACCJC is that they don't notify you if you're deemed to be fiscally healthy or not at risk, or in the moderate-risk category, I guess I think. So they, we don't, we won't necessarily receive a communication. It's kind of a classic case of no news is good news, I guess, in that if we don't hear from them, that means we've been removed from being on enhanced monitoring. And just to refresh the memory of the Board, the ACCJC's practice is that you have to be on enhanced monitoring for three consecutive years via the Annual Fiscal Report in order to have it kind of be bumped up to the commission level for potential action, and then they might request or require us to submit a special report. So, but if you move on or off of that enhanced monitoring, it has to be three consecutive years. So, and as Jim indicated, the numbers are moving in the right direction, and so that might be sufficient to get us off of the enhanced monitoring this year.
Thank you, Dr. Wornall. And thank, and thank you, and Mr. Reeves too, for giving us this extra information, this additional information that we never received before. I think, you know, but I'll say it, but we really, we really value the steps and the level of communication that it takes to bring us to the Board, and yeah, we appreciate that transparency. So thank you for that, and thank you for your time. We'll go to our Consent Calendar, 11.1. Any changes or comments to consent? Seeing none. Catherine, do we have a, well, let me do one quick, quick, thank you, I do have a motion, but any public comment, Catherine? I don't see any hands.
No, no public comment.
And I have a motion. Thank you, trustee Baldini. Or sorry, trustee Baker, did you have any?
No, 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 I was just gonna second.
Oh, thank you, excuse me. And I have a second for trustee Baker. Any discussion? Seeing no hands, we will do a roll call. Student trustee Soto Gonzalez.
Aye.
Trustee Baldini.
Aye.
Trustee Goff.
Aye.
Trustee Rios.
Aye.
Trustee Baker.
Aye.
Trustee Luna. Iverson absent, and, and I will vote aye to approve consent.
Trustee Dodd, could you tell me who the, made the motion, please?
Trustee Baldini.
Oh, thank you.
We will go to 12.1, a first reading BP 4060. Any comments or questions from trustees? Seeing none. Catherine, do we have any public comment on?
No, I have received none on this policy.
Okay. We will, it's not an action item, it's just a first reading. We'll move on to the second reading of Board Policies BP 7240, 7250, 7260, which are really just previous, already approved policies, but we're just, in one document, it's BP 7240, so this practically just breaks it up. Catherine, do we have any public comment?
No, sir, we do not.
Well, I would welcome a motion.
Move approval.
Thank you, trustee Rios, for your motion. And do I have a second?
Baldini, a second.
Trustee Baldini, and but thank you too. Trustee Baker. We'll do a roll call. Student trustee Soto Gonzalez.
Aye.
Trustee Baldini.
Aye.
Trustee Goff.
Aye.
Trustee Rios.
Aye.
Trustee Baker.
Aye.
Trustee Luna.
Aye.
Iverson absent, and I will vote aye for approval. Information Item 13.1, Faculty Association Initial Proposal for Negotiations, which is posted on NetDocs. Catherine, do we have any comment, public comment?
No, we do not.
Okay. This doesn't require any action, and we'll move to 13.2, Napa Valley College District Initial Proposal for Negotiations with the Faculty Association. Catherine, do we have any public comment on this item?
We do not, no public comment.
Thank you very much. Moving to 14.1, which is an action item, Curriculum Changes for the Spring. We have two packets for approval. Catherine, do we have any public comment on our curriculum approvals?
No, we don't.
Well, I would welcome a motion.
Baldini, move approval.
Baldini, loving, loving the quick motions, thank you. And do you need a second?
Second.
Yeah, I give me that to trustee Baker with the second and Rios the third. We'll roll call a vote with our student trustee Soto Gonzalez.
Aye.
Trustee Baldini.
Aye.
Trustee Goff.
Aye.
Trustee Rios.
Aye.
Trustee Baker.
Aye.
Trustee Luna.
Aye.
Trustee Iverson is absent, and I will vote yes as well for approval. We will move to Action Item 16.1, where Mr. Reeves will be presenting our Chancellor's Office Quarterly Financial Status Report for the period ending March 31, 2022.
Thank you, trustee Dodd. This is referred to as our 311 Report. The Board likely has seen these in the past. The report before you is the Third Quarter Report, and as you see it outlined, you get a sense of what the history of the report has been. The right column is the projected 21, 22. We're generally doing okay, as I'll mention in our review of our next, our budget area. The only place we're really lagging is in revenues, and that is because we have not received our, our, our payment from our property tax revenues. If you look at, if you scroll down, Catherine, to Section 4, you'll notice on the right, you'll see percentage... you'll see percentages, so we are a bit under in total revenue for the reason I just mentioned, and we are about at 74.8% on expenditures. So the third quarter, that's pretty close. The next report, I think you'll see we're doing a tad better than that because of some reclass work we're doing, but we're doing, we're on track relative to expenditures. Toward the bottom of the page, you'll notice, I want to call your attention to Section 7, Does the District Have Significant Fiscal Problems That Must Be Addressed? The answer that we've provided is yes and yes, and the explanation is below, we simply highlighted some of the issues that we know about now, about the college operating and deficit spending, with a commitment to turn, turn the situation around in 2122, which we're making great progress at, by keeping expenditures within expected revenues. We anticipate improving our fund balance, as we'll see in a moment, bringing the balance to 8.85. I'm not committed to that, I'm not ready to put my name on that yet, but we could, we could do that. And although we may not achieve a 10% reserve in 2122, we will be working toward 10% or better in the next, toward the next fiscal year. So I think that might be realistic, but we'll, we're keeping an eye on that, certainly. So that's the report that we submit to the Chancellor's Office, it also has some enrollment data that Robin provides, and so I think the good news is we're on track, and we're filing the report on time, so I count that as a win.
Thank you, Mr. Reeves, I agree, I agree. Yeah, and we have seen these before, but we never really, we never reviewed these in conjunction with the, you know, the monthly actual, projected versus actual comparisons, which I know we are going to be moving on to as well, very shortly. So thank you for that presentation. Catherine, is there any public comment on this item?
No, I have received none, and I see no hands raised.
Thank you. I would welcome a motion, send this to the Chancellor's Office.
Will we accept the report?
In a second.
Motion from Trustee Rios, and a second from Trustee Deluna. I will do a roll call, Student Trustee Soto Gonzalez.
Aye.
Trustee Baldini.
Aye.
Trustee Goff.
Aye.
Trustee Rios.
Aye.
Trustee Baker.
Aye.
Trustee Deluna.
Aye.
Iverson absent, and I will vote aye as well. To 16.2, an overview of our operating fund, Fund 11. Mr. Reeves?
Thank you. This is our Fund 11 report, I hope it's looking familiar to you now. It's, this is as of April 30th, and so you'll see on this, the goldenrod colored column, Catherine's really good, good, good at driving this, so hang in there with us. So, top of the second goldenrod column, Catherine, thank you, 43022, those are our year-to-date revenues on top, as you'll see, and expenditures below. Let me also point out, you'll see on the far right side, that, that our revenues haven't changed, our projection hasn't changed, however, under 430 during the total, at the total revenues, we're only showing still 29933, and that's for the reason I just mentioned in the 311 report, is we haven't received those, those local property tax receipts yet. So as soon as those come in, that will, that will move that number in a more positive direction. I'm going to move down to expenditures, same goldenrod copy, under total salaries, could you hold the cursor there, under total salaries?
Right here.
Perfect, thank you. Last month, I reported that we were doing extraordinarily well there, and we are doing well there, but not extraordinarily well, and I'll share with you why. We had, we had two anomalies in our payroll software system, Alucion, that gave rise to a more positive picture than the reality suggested. So we made those corrections in Alucion, and the number you see here is, is the accurate number for year-to-dates at the end of April. So we're running 22808, we're running a bit behind, a bit better, if you will, than this time last year. And if you'll move Catherine to the right, where it says variance, all the way to the right, I've said, I've said this to, a few times to many people, what we want to pay attention to is this column. This column is telling us how we're doing based on the budget you adopted. So obviously, a number in parentheses is moving in the wrong direction, and there may be very good reasons for that, but that gives you a sense of where we are. Our total salaries are, we have annualized these, meaning that we have taken the 10 months that we've actually, we actually have data for, we've divided the 10 months by 10, and multiplied that number by 12 to get a projection to year-end. And so what we're showing today is about $400,899 to the good. Now, there's a little caveat here that I need to give you a heads up about. Our SERP folks will be collecting their vacation pay as they leave the college, at the end of May and the end of June. And I believe it's been reported to you in the past, but if it hasn't, I'll just share with you, that our vacation accrual is a big number, when you look at our total vacation accrual. Now, some of that is for, much of that is for people currently here, but much of it, a good portion of it is, is folks who have gone over their allocation. So that's, that's bearing fruit, if you will, for them, as they leave the institution, there'll be a payout of that vacation pay, and that's a fairly good number, certainly of those folks leaving, about $350,000 total of payout. Now, we would have paid, we pay out, we have a pay-as-you-go plan so far with the district, and so it actually comes out of our current fund. In a perfect world, we would fund those each year in another fund, and just pay them out as we, as we need to, based on those savings, and not take it out of the unrestricted general fund, but that's, that's not what we've been able to do today. So we're trending in a very good direction, I think we can manage this in terms of end of the year, but that 400 number probably won't be 400 at the end of the year, once those payouts occur. I'm going to move down that same column, Catherine, to our expenditures, our total employed benefits, we're still trending in a positive direction, I think those are going to be pretty close. Moving down to total books and supplies, we're behind a bit, about $110,000. We have some, some expenditures that exceeded budget to some extent, and, and I don't have a, I don't have a specific reason why, but I can take a look at that. Let's scroll down a bit more, Catherine. So you can see, total other operating supplies, we're heading in the direction of about $74,000 to the good, if you look at the variance column. The cap, excuse me, the capital outlay is a shift from, it's an accounting shift of expenses from our maintenance and repairs area down to capital outlay. We reclassed, reclassified expenses related to computer leases. The real advantage here is it moves, it addresses some of our 50% issues, but by more accurately reflecting those in our, in our budget. And so our increase, or decrease in fund balance, based on this report, is an increase of 352248, and about a just under 1% increase in our, in our fund balance. That said, don't forget that we have that, that vacation payout there. Now, I think we're still going to do fine, we're going to, we're going to hit the number, but it's not, it's not going to be as terrific as I had hoped, so just a heads up there. The SERP will save us, I'm still waiting on the latest projection, you know, between $450,000 or upwards of that each year, but that savings begins next year. So we'll have, you know, next year's budget will realize those savings in there, you know, the first year of the five-year savings for the SERP program. So that is, that's the long and short of the, of the April report. We continue to do lots of work on reclassing expenses to the most appropriate fund, and much of that is occurring out of Fund 11 into Fund 12, where we can legitimately do that. And so I think we'll, we'll be able to, to do more of that as we, as we reach the end of the year, and that'll be one of the reasons we'll be able to, I think, finish the year in the black.
Thank you, Mr. Reeves. Any questions from trustees?
I just have a quick question, Mr. Reeves, the, you said something like, when you're talking about vacation pay, that people go over their allocation, what did you mean by that?
For example, if you have, I'm going to say 22 days a year, and, and you can accrue up to, and don't quote me on the policy here, you can accrue up to, say, one and a half times, so let's say you can, you can carry 33 days. We have, we have several folks who have gone over that time, and so that's, it's all a liability, you always have to pay it out, the vacation pay is owned by those folks, so you, there's no, you're always paying it out, but, but you're paying out, you have to pay out more if you don't enforce that policy. Now, in some cases, you have people who, who in very, very individual cases need to, they can't do that, but in places I've been in the past, and I think actually, Charles is working in this direction now, is an employee can't earn anymore past that threshold. So there's an incentive to take the time off, and I think that's been, that's been a challenge here in terms of enforcing that policy, and that's created a larger liability for vacation, vacation payout than perhaps we should have had.
Thank you.
Good question. Trustee Baker?
Just going to throw in a thought, I'm familiar with the use-it-or-lose-it concept, because my husband's job is like that, but my current, in my current position where I work now, our agreement with employees is if you accrue past that cap, which is, I think, a double, you know, double what you could accrue in a single year, then there's an automatic payout annually. So you don't apply for it, it just happens, so you never can accrue more than two years' worth in a single year, over, on the books of a single year, because you will get, you'll get paid for it, but you just get paid for it every year, rather than when you leave.
Yeah, there is, there is some reason to do that, because when you pay out, you pay out at the current salary rate. So if someone's been here for 20 years, and their salaries escalated, they earn vacation at a lower rate, and are being paid out at a higher rate, that's why that makes sense. But, but we're always going to have a liability, because people are earning legitimately earned vacation, but we need to, we need to put controls in place, so we are taking on that liability, that growing liability over time.
Dr. Frost?
Jim, we, we didn't have a chance to talk about this, so I may be putting you on the spot, but it comes from a question that came earlier in the day from a trustee, and these are the kinds of questions I want the trust, encourage the trustees to ask you in the future. If, if all things being equal, if nothing changes from this time, 2022, to this time, 2023, would you anticipate the college budget being in the black, at zero, or in the red, and by how much?
If, I think your starting assumption is, is nothing changes? I'm working on the budget right now, and the changes that have occurred thus far will have a positive impact on next year's budget. And it's a combination of things, it's the SERP, it's resignations, it's some reassignments, and it's some reclass of appropriate positions or portions of positions to Fund 12. So, so you, it's trending in a good direction toward, toward a budget that will increase the reserve. So, Dr. Frost, that's the best I'm going to tell you.
This will be a good question for us to come back in the June meeting, because the boards ask questions about post-employment benefits, salary increases, and the impact on the budget. We'll be able to provide this back to the board in the June meeting, as you go into approving next year's budget. This is, this is the kind of information I think you need in advance to make informed decisions as you're approving budgets. So thanks, Jim, for, for helping me out with that.
Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you very much, Mr. Reeves, don't go too far. We are moving to 16.3, Discussion on Tax Revenue Anticipated Notes, TRAN, this fiscal year.
Yes, thank you. The TRAN will actually occur next fiscal year. The TRAN, as, as most of you know, is, is an acronym for the Tax Revenue Anticipated Notes. And what a TRAN does is provide you cash to bridge periods of time where your, your revenues, your revenues aren't coming in. So you all know that, that our primary source of revenue are our tax receipts, local tax receipts, and those funds come in generally in two payments over the course of the year. And so as we do our analysis, this is a preliminary analysis of our cash demand, we get to some points in the late fall where, where we're, we're close to our limits on cash availability. And so we continue this, this analysis, and working with a financial firm to, to anticipate getting a TRAN that helps us in our cash flow. Now, this is not, I, don't be confused, this is not a budget issue, this is a cash flow issue, but there is a cost of capital here, there's a cost of funds here that we need to incorporate into the budget. So there's interest rates, and there might be some legal fees attached to this as well. So as we complete this analysis and bring to the board in June, a recommendation to number one, do one if the analysis supports, and number two, include those costs in the, in the budget moving forward. Trustee Dodd asked, asked the magic question, I think, in Budget and Finance, will we need these forever? And the, and the answer is no, but you need to maintain a level of reserves in your unrestricted general fund to meet your cash demands over time. So that's another reason to grow the general fund to, from my perspective, well over 10%. Well over 10%, so that we, so cash is not an issue, because cash doesn't come for free, it comes at a cost to our, to our budget. So again, this is an information item, it's, it's our preliminary analysis about what our cash demands will be, and we anticipate bringing you a recommendation, and perhaps a resolution at the June board meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Reeves, I see a question, and from Trustee Baker?
Yeah, I'm just curious, because since the Yeah, I'm just curious because since the report that you were sharing with us before that goes to the chancellor's office, one of the questions is, do we have a cash flow issue? And in that report, we answered no. So I'm just curious, at what point would, would these numbers become where we would have to switch that to a yes?
Well, that, that questionnaire was about this fiscal year, and we don't have a cash flow issue this fiscal year. So, and that, this fiscal year ends June 30th. So we will be answering that at our next, our next 311 report, if in fact, we, we need to. There's a little dynamic that occurs with funds held with the county. You can utilize a good part of your funds, you can't utilize funds designated for bond payments. But you can utilize a good part of, part of your total balance for cash flow purposes on a temporary basis. For example, if we had funds set aside for a particular purpose and we had that latitude, you can go, you can go outside of perhaps what your unrestricted general fund is and use those on a very temporary basis. And that's part of the analysis about how much or if we need to do a TRAN.
Thank you. Any other questions? Seeing none, we will move on to information item 16.4, the FICMAT report. And Mr. Reeves, are you going to lead us on this? Right, I see Mr. Walters and Ms. Giacominis is here. And thank you both for being here very much, we really, really appreciate it.
Yes, thank you. Thank you. They've been very good about being flexible and, and willing to jump up and, and present the FICMAT. So I'll turn it over to Michelle and George.
Thank you. Okay. Well, thank you for having us here tonight, and thank you for your patience. I know that originally you were asked to come to the April meeting and I had a cog flip. So thank you for your patience, there's a lot of board meetings to get to. So my name is Michelle Giacominis. And I work for the Fiscal Crisis and Management Team, also known as FICMAT. Also with me, I have George Walters, and he works for Cambridge West Partnership. And I would have nobody else, I would want nobody else with me on a job like this. So happy to have George with me, and sooner or later, I will let George speak. I am the, the mouthy one on every job. You would know that if you ever work with me again. But he will speak in a little bit. There were some other people on the job as well, and they are listed in the report. Catherine's going to be my buddy at some point, I'm going to name some pages at some point. And, and Catherine and I are going to try to tag team this together, but not quite yet. So bear with me. In October 2021, the California Community College Chancellor's Office asked us to come into the district and asked us to actually conduct a fiscal health risk analysis, which you'll see takes up the majority of the report with a focus on cash management, and to identify whether the appropriate and sufficient financial information is shared in a timely manner with trustees. And I could already tell by sitting through this meeting tonight that much more information is being shared with trustees. So that was making me feel much better. The request for this report followed the district receiving an emergency loan for payroll in October 2021. I'm sure you all remember that. The chancellor's office was concerned, just as many other agencies were at that time. FICMAT considered this an emergency request, and we adjusted our workload to come into Napa Valley College quickly. FICMAT visited the district on November 29th to conduct interviews, collect data, and review documents. Follow-up interviews were conducted on Zoom in January. I have to tell you that administrators that we talked to were incredibly helpful. All the documents we requested were made available to us. And I have to tell you, we asked for a lot of documents. It takes your staff a lot of time to put them together. The interim CBO that you had at that time was invaluable. Without him, I don't know that we could have completed our job. And the catch-up work that he did at your district at that time was amazing. As you know, you were very behind, and he really did a lot of, a lot of work to get you caught up. With his time, as well as the controller and the rest of the staff in business and finance, we got the information that we needed to get this report done in a timely manner. Please remember that, that FICMAT reports only talk about what we see that need to be fixed. We don't talk about all of the good things that the district is doing. We focus on systems and processes that may need to be fixed or improved. And at the, at the time the chancellor's office asked us to come in, there were strong concerns about cash. So while we know that you were and are doing many good things at Napa Valley College, that was not the focus of this report. We also know that a lot of things have changed at the college since we did our fieldwork. We could already tell by watching this board meeting tonight that many things have changed for the better. But we won't be talking about those improvements tonight. This report was what we knew then, it was a snapshot in time. So keep that in mind. In some cases, this report is very out of date, and we know that. But first, let's talk about the first scope item of this report. It's the fiscal health risk analysis. So Catherine, if you can go to page eight of the report, the fiscal health risk analysis score was 36.4%. See, we kind of jived on it, that was kind of cool. Which indicates a moderate risk of fiscal insolvency. And that means that if operational change aren't made, that fiscal insolvency could, it could, could occur. You have a moderate risk of that happening. All in all, there are 18 sections of the FHRA, each containing specific questions. There are over 140 questions in all. Each section and specific question are common indicators of risk or potential insolvency for districts that have neared insolvency and needed assistance from outside agencies. Each section of this analysis is critical to an organization, and lack of, of attention to these areas will eventually lead to a district's failure. I'm going to highlight those sections where Napa Valley College received a no answer on 50% of the questions in the section. I'd love to talk about each of the questions where the college received a no answer. But I know you don't want to spend the next two hours listening to me talking about the fiscal health risk analysis. You have to understand, I think that every question in the fiscal health risk analysis is important. George and I built this from the ground up. So it's hard not to get overly excited about this tool as we believe in its strength and importance, and we like to talk about it. But I will not do that to you tonight. But we will talk about first, so let's go to page nine, please. Budget development and adoption. So for Napa Valley College, in this section, well, for any district that were to fill this out, in budget development and adoption, there are 11 questions in all. And Napa Valley College, there are six questions that Napa Valley College received a no answer on. And to not receive no's in this area, Napa Valley College would need to use historical actuals for budget projections, would need to stop using prior year rollover budgets for 4,000 and 5,000 expenditures, would need to use the Student Center Funding Formula calculation as part of budget development, would need to have procedures on evaluating the acceptance of grants. And the Board of Trustees would need to approve a comprehensive budget calendar. So those are the types of things that would help that score actually get smaller. Because in this case, you want the score to get smaller. So that's the first section that hurt Napa Valley College in the score. The next section we're going to go to is on page 11, and we're going to talk about cash. Because in 10 questions, Napa Valley's, five of them were no answers. And in that case, the district or Napa Valley College wasn't balancing cash accounts with monthly bank statements. There were outstanding warrants all the way back to July of 2014, which even for non-accountants, you can imagine, that's a no-no. That's a very long way back, that's way too far back. And then again, there is that emergency loan for payroll for, that happened in October of 2021. So that's, those are the reasons that, why there were issues in the cash section. Next, we're going to go to page 15 and talk about the general fund. In that area, there were four no's out of seven. The areas of concern there is that the district doesn't ensure that one-time revenues pay for one-time expenditures. Also, the percentage of the district's general fund unrestricted budget that is allocated to salaries and benefits and instructional service agreement expenses is not at or below 85% for the three prior years. In fact, for 1718, the district had 87%. For 1819, 86%. And then for 1920, 87%. Also, the district is not in compliance with the 50% law. Actually, the district's 2021 fiscal year end, end closing amount was 41%. Also, the district's fall 2021 FON is 72.4, and total contract faculty is 111.4, which results in the district being 39 over the FON as of fall 2021. And that's an expensive overage. The next area is on page 15 and is for information systems and data management. There are four no's out of six. And this really has to do with integrated systems. For instance, human resources and position control systems are not tied to the financial reporting system. And those are really systems that should talk to each other. Also, the enrollment system is not integrated with the budget system. Again, systems that should be integrated. Also, the district doesn't have a security plan for regularly scheduled evaluations that protect sensitive information. And also, the district doesn't have a process to ensure annual supplemental and success awards are validated. And that's the concern, as you can imagine. The next section, internal controls and fraud prevention, on page 16. Five no's out of 11 questions. The district doesn't reconcile suspense accounts, including salary and benefits, at least quarterly. The district didn't close the 1920 books until the summer of 2021. And then the district doesn't have processes or procedures to discourage and detect fraud or an independent fraud reporting hotline. The next area on page 17 has to do with multi-year projections. Two no's out of three questions. Has to do with multi-year projections not considering the student sender, student-centered funding formula. And then also, multi-year projections not being used when financial decisions are being made. And then last, but certainly not least, because this really is a huge concern. When you can imagine on page 18, there are seven questions in all, and six of those seven questions received a no response in the position control area, which when 80, over 85% of your budget is, is people, this is not, this is really a big risk for you in position control. The district does not account for all positions and costs. The district doesn't analyze and adjust permanent staffing based on enrollment. The district doesn't reconcile budget, payroll, and position control regularly. The district doesn't identify a budget source for new positions before the position is authorized by the board. And extra assignments are handled at the management level, and the college does not seek governing board approval before the extra assignment is offered. I'd like to highlight that in addition to what I've discussed about the fiscal health risk analysis, district governance practices have hindered the development of the standard policies and practices normally adopted in other California community colleges. Progress has been inhibited in the budget deliberation and development process. Based on a review of board agendas, information packets, and interviews with board members, while minimum statutory financial reporting and adoption requirements were met, the governing board did not have sufficient information at meetings to make basic finance-related decisions and overly relied on statements by the president and CBO. Trustees reported that they felt they were being shielded from negative information, negative fiscal information, and that needs to change. And I felt that tonight, it's starting to change. As you go through our report, you'll see example after example of the items the board should have approved or seen but did not. These include the board not approving things like extra assignments, intra-fund transfers, and, and budget calendars. I'm now going to have my colleague George finally talk, let's talk to you about the circumstances leading the chancellor's office to ask FICMAT to come to Napa Valley College in the first place. I think it will help you understand the story of how things got to the point of needing a cash flow loan from an outside agency and why we are here tonight. George?
Thanks, Michelle. Well, I'll, I'll try to, I'll try to weave in some good news as we go through. We, we fully understand that, that you were really hit with a, you know, it's kind of the perfect storm last summer. You're a smaller district. You don't have the depth, you can't afford the depth of, you know, staff, you know, specialists in every single department. You were transitioning from an apportionment-driven operational model to a community-supported model, which is very, very different. And you had key positions turnover right at the right time. And at the same time, ACCJC did their analysis of the report, and voila, at the same time, you didn't have any, any cash. In prior years, your, your fiscal services department, they all, they prepared for the cash in a different way, whether they received a trans, loan, et cetera. So we fully understand that's the, that's what caused the initial situation late in the summer, et cetera. But with that comes another level of scrutiny. And that's why, that's why we have had to kind of dive in, and we were asked to dive in by the chancellor's office. So although I'm, I am very passionate about the FHRA and the questions, I view them as things to go look at and questions, and just to see how well the district can answer the questions or provide data. I'm more interested in a trend, in trends and data. So you'll see in the second half of the report, I speak to some of the higher, the higher level issues related to staffing. I don't think anybody at Napa Valley College, you know, they know that this is not new news right here. The district size and scope, I think you're always going to have this challenge. I mean, you're a very small district in our system. And it's harder, they're, they're much, much more difficult to operate. You just, you just don't have the layers of specialists. You have, you have staff and managers who wear many, many hats, you know? And then you lose one or two positions, and next thing you know, you're not meeting critical, critical requirements in reporting. So just keep that in mind, you're not going to be able to do the things like the larger districts do. And that's okay. But what I really want to talk about is the trend data. So if we could look at, let me just make sure there's nothing else in the report. I do want to make a quick statement about the 50% law. And it is very true that the community-supported districts have a different set of guidelines for the 50% law. It is still very important, the requirement to meet the 50% law still is, still is, still is in place for every district in our system. The penalty is the issue that the chancellor's office can't enforce because they're not giving you any, you know, they're not funding you in any way in the unrestricted general fund. So just keep that in mind, that, that it still is in play. You still have to do the report, you still have to submit the report. You still will not meet it until your budget becomes in more balance. You still will not meet it uh, until your budget becomes in more balance, uh, but you, the penalty is what they can't enforce at this point. So, so if we can go to um, the first chart, which is on
They can't enforce the penalty, but the guidelines still have to be followed as far as reporting it to the chancellor's office.
Yeah, exactly. Yeah. Um, if we go to the first uh, chart, which is the uh, enrollment staffing, salary, and benefits comparison. I just want to point out a couple of things, and hopefully people have the report and they can see the chart. I don't, or if you want to pull up on the screen, it might be pretty small for for the, for the audience, but if, this is really what, what this is, a seven-year comparison, it's a trend comparison, and it's a bunch of data points that we look at to see how the operations uh, are taking place, so the trend of operations. So I, and I'm going to assume you looked at this. James, you probably reviewed this with everybody in the board and the budget committee, et cetera, but I just want to point out that the top section is the FTS that are produced. So in the seven-year period, all the way on the right-hand side, you'll see that there's a twenty-nine percent decline. And this is through twenty twenty-one, so this does have about a six hundred FTS drop due to COVID or due to the pandemic. The next section is about efficiency, so this would be your classroom efficiency. So we look at classroom, average class sizes, and then we look at the production of each full-time equivalent faculty load. So this isn't looking at anybody individually, it's as an entire institution. So you're down about twenty-one percent. And when I say down, fourteen, fifteen compared to twenty twenty-one, there's a lot of nuances in the middle. And section counts, which aligns uh, with your FT, our FTS decline is down about thirty percent. And the next section is really interesting is the staffing. So we break it up into two areas. One is the teaching, the teaching staffing or the teachers, the actual in-the-classroom uh, teaching faculty, and we break it up between contract and overload. And the contract is that number that uh, uh, is, is related to your FON in a way, but although your FON also captures uh, non-instructional faculty and categorical faculty. But in this case, in the classroom, you have twelve percent more full-time contract faculty. Overload is up by seventy-five percent. And that makes sense because part-time or non-contract is down sixteen percent. So we just saw a shift from part-time, hour, hourly to contract overload, which is technically hourly as well. So the other area is the management staff and confidential that are charged to the unrestricted general fund, and these are, this is full-time equivalent. So in the same period of time, we had fifty-three percent more management positions, thirteen percent staff, increase in staff positions, and sixty-one percent in confidential, but the number is pretty small, the percentage is high, but the number is small. So what that tells me is that in the management area, we're probably charging categorical managers to the unrestricted general fund. I can't prove that, but you certainly can, and, and uh, sounds like based on James's presentation that he's identifying some of that already. That does directly impact your fifty percent law and your unrestricted general fund. And then we, in the bottom section, it, we focus on just, just expenses. So the first category is, you know, salaries, they're up twenty-six percent. We see that um, should be around twenty, but you have a lot of additional, additional staff and managers. So it's, it's a little high. Uh, benefits are up twenty-eight percent. Uh, this is, this is a lot mostly due to pension reform, so you, you look at Calpers and Calsters and those large increases. That's really what's gobbling up any new money you get. It's, it's, this is, this is the area. And then the last section is fours, fives, six, and sevens. So we've seen supplies go down. This is typical when we see uh, when we see a district begin to not have the unrestricted general fund that they uh, you know, they, they room in there, so we see salary and benefits or total compensation climbing as a percentage. We will always see supplies decreasing as a percentage. Um, and then we have our, our other operating expenses, and, and this is actually, that one percent is kind of odd because it's during the pandemic, our operating expenses everywhere shrunk. So if I look at twenty twenty-one, it's four point seven million, but the year before it was six, six million. You know, as you, as we come out of the pandemic, that's going to go back up to six million, so you're going to see a big increase there as well. So the, so the, what the, what the data says is that enrollment is dropping twenty-nine percent, but we're seeing increases in staff about the same. So you know, typically, we would want to see that enrollment and staffing kind of trend in the same direction. When I say staffing, I don't mean, I don't mean classified staff, I mean all personnel. So this is, this is what contributed to the fifty percent law compliance issue. This is what contributed to the cash flow issue. This is, you know, it's just uh, it during that transition from apportionment-driven operation to a community uh, community-supported uh, model, we just, we just started hiring too quickly. We didn't let, we didn't let our ending balance grow uh, to meet cash flow issues. We, we just projected, hey, next year, we're going to be, we're going to be community-supported or basic aid. And we started hiring, and that's what kind of what the data shows. So hopefully you've all looked through that. I, I'm very impressed with everything that, that James presented tonight. Um, it's nice to see, you know, the multi-year budget projections and the uh, you know, the budget updates. You know, a lot of times we'll see a district that, that pass, you know, they'll adopt a budget September fifteenth, and they'll never go back to the board with an update. And that's, so that's uh, it's really good to see um, all of those, those reports. So it's six months, and I can tell you that it's very different now than it was six months ago. Just from reviewing board agendas, et cetera. So I'm going to go ahead and scroll down to um, district governance and communication, and Michelle touched on this and, and um, really hit this one home with you. I just want to say that we could really tell when we were interviewing the board members, uh, it exactly lined up with what we saw in the board agendas. And it's very different tonight. So I, I have to give you a lot of, a lot of credit. Whoever's, whoever's driving it, I hope it's everybody. But I think it's, I think you should uh, you know, take a lot of credit for it, and I think that's probably the entire board, it's probably James, it's probably Jennifer, it's probably, you know, it's probably a lot of people. But I want to just go through the recommendations real quick, and I know there's a million questions probably. The first one is about monitoring cash. I, I don't even need to say that now because you're already doing it. Uh, continue to fill the key fiscal positions. Uh, you have a relatively newer director of fiscal services that is, that, that we wanted to ensure continue to get that level of training. Uh, because as hard as it is to fill many positions in our system, this one is by far the hardest uh, position to fill. It looks like you followed through with the SERP, which we didn't know about in, in uh, November and December, so that's good, and hopefully you're not going to replace all of those positions right away. The, the issue related to the reserve, which is number four. So the chancellor's office in the last year and a half have been recommending uh, two months of operating expenses because that's the recommendation from, from the uh, the uh, I just lost it in my head, the government accounting standards. Um, so
GFO, GFAO?
GFAO. It's really important for a community-supported district to have two months because that's usually the cash you borrow uh, if you need to, is two months. And you saw that this, you saw that this past fall. So I think uh, James's recommendation to me, uh, two months is about sixteen percent, so uh, that seems about right. The next one, number five, is kind of odd, and a lot of people ask questions about number five. And there are a lot of districts that don't do a lot of things well, and it seems to be the smaller the district, the more it is more, the more challenges there are to communicate, communicate at a very high level, have a really solid research department, have integrated planning, have uh, position control integrated uh, in the budget development process, uh, you know, all of those issues. So they just work a little bit more conservatively until they get a good team in place. And I think that's where you were last year when we were on campus. Uh, we saw things that we would typically see at a small district. But those small districts, you'll notice if you look up and down the state, their ending balances are pretty high, you know, because they just have to be a little more conservative on, on spending money. So we talked about position control, and it sounds like uh, we heard, we heard there were some fixes to Alucion. That's a good, that's good momentum um, when it comes to identifying open positions, et cetera. Uh, the enrollment management plan was being discussed, I don't know where that is. Uh, but, but classroom efficiency and student outcomes uh, should be a main focus of that. You're already trending uh, revenue projections, and I, and even though you're community-supported, the reason why it's important to also trend your SEFF, one is a requirement, it's an audit requirement to be able to, to uh, audit your supplemental and success awards. That's a requirement this year. Uh, but, but two, you want to know, you want to know how far you are away from or away from traditionally funded to community-supported because we know that districts can go back and forth in and out of being community-supported, and there's nothing worse for a district than that. So we would say, you know, when you get to a certain point as a, as an institution to say, you know, the, the chance of us going back into being traditionally funded is zero, then, you know, you have, you can play by a different set of rules, et cetera. So but for right now, I think, I think you need to, you need to still include those, and it sounds like ACCJC, ACCJC are, they're requiring it anyway. So the, the number nine is, is really about presentation schedules and key reports. We saw a lot of that tonight. You know, just the more the board and the other constituent groups see the same report format, same information, uh, they start to learn it. And then that's, at that point, you really start to, you know, the, the questions become uh, you know, a little more specific. Uh, trust is built across the institution, which right now, uh, or at least six months ago, was, was pretty minimal related to finance. Uh, the number ten is generic. A lot of times we recommend, and this was the case six months ago, and you may be already doing this, um, some help uh, with, between the cabinet and the board to understand reports, and maybe not during a traditional board meeting, maybe a study session, because that's when they can really ask questions and, and so if it's a three-eleven report, you know, maybe if there are, there may be questions that they won't, don't want to ask in a, you know, in a traditional meeting just for time, uh, enrollment reports, et cetera. I think this is pretty self-explanatory that there, there's some study sessions where you can really catch up. You know, a new board member comes on board, you know, how do they catch up? Uh, et cetera. Uh, the number twelve is really about staffing levels, and we, we talked about uh, in the data, keeping those, those levels uh, tied to student population served, if possible. Uh, they should trend in the same direction, et cetera. Number thirteen, sounds like uh, James, you're already doing this, which is uh, conducting time and effort studies for categorical programs uh, related to salaries and benefits. I don't know if the board has a policy related to one-time funds to be used for one-time expenses, but that really, that really helps uh, when we start to get to that point where we're running out of funds or, or ending balance is shrinking, et cetera. Number fifteen uh, is just communicating one more time, uh, same thing, when we're going to spend one-time funds, you, you know, we have that conversation. Your OPEB liability, number sixteen, you're, you're, you're underfunded in that currently. Uh, it's, it's outlined in the um, in the report, so I just say make a plan, and it sounds like that's what you're already addressing for twenty-two, twenty-three budget. And then do everything you can to meet the fifty percent law. Politically, it's a big deal. And uh, we see many, many good people run out of town over the fifty percent law, and uh, sounds like you're doing that as well. So a lot of good things have happened, a lot of changes, we, we've seen a lot of changes. Uh, you really took Doug, Doug Roberts' uh, good work and just kind of expanded on it. So uh, thank him for us, thank, uh, thank everybody uh, for uh, keeping this going, and I can tell Michelle's thinking, wow, this, this is one less district we need to worry about. So anyway, we'll open it up for questions.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much. I did want to opportu, have an opportunity just for the, um, for trustee questions, to have maybe any members of the, the public write a sort of public comment. And that's okay. You guys have indulged us, it's just incredibly informative discussion and really meaningful. I know, but trustees reviewed, reviewed this report multiple, multiple times. I know many uh, members of the, of the college staff have done the same. So I just want to see if many folks, not board members, have any hands up.
We love, I, I love questions, as you know.
And I do not see any hands up, so I'm going to close this session of, of public comment. I see one. I will reopen it um, for Danielle Alexander.
Hi, I just, I really wanted to say thank you to Michelle and George for your presentation tonight. I feel like it explained a lot, and also Jim, thank you. George, I just, I was really liking what you shared about us, about the studies so that we could all learn more. I know you were talking about the board, but I know that the classified senate has a great interest in understanding this more. It comes up at our meetings. And so I just wanted to put a bug in everybody's ear while there was a public comment. If we could figure out how to learn more and how to be trained, the classified senate would really appreciate that. And just really thank you again, all three of you. That was, this has been really informative and awesome. Thanks.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. And I, and I think, I think just do it, just having the reports look the same and be delivered and, and reviewed the same. But I, you know, in, in February this month, these are the reports that we, we do, and, you know, and they line up with certain reporting requirements, et cetera. But people tend to catch on. And uh, it's when there's a lot of turnover and processes change, and then this is not important to share, or it's not done on time, you know, that's what kind of the cycle you got into, and I think, I think you're breaking that cycle. Sure seems like it. So
Thank you. Thank you, and thank you, Danielle, for um, your, your comment and direction. I actually believe there's going to be a couple of board members making kind of similar recommendations as part of our future agenda items. And then we have, I see one other hand up, uh, Michael Giveneccio.
Um, yeah, I just had a, a quick question that I don't know if you have a good answer for, but we have the faculty obligation number that we can use to go through and kind of measure our efficiency when it comes to faculty. Are you aware of anything like that for management or staff?
So the faculty obligation number um, is somewhat used for efficiency, but not exactly. It's really only classroom teachers or classroom faculty. But I get your, I get your question. There, there is a way uh, that you can measure institutional efficiency. And that really looks at all staff, and it's, and the, there's no right or wrong number. There's, it's more of a trend. So is the trend going, is a trend aligning, is a trend going in two different directions, et cetera? It's not, we didn't, we didn't include it in this uh, report only because it's a fairly new way of looking at things. And it's used primarily for rightsizing projects. So if you, so if a district has lost twenty-five percent of their enrollment, thirty percent of their enrollment, enrollment, 30% of their enrollment, but, but overall personnel is still at the same level, you would start looking at, you know, you look at classroom efficiency, of course, but then, you know, it's not fair just to look at classroom efficiency. We need to look at institutional efficiency. And I have done that for NAPA. Actually, we did it last week, just, just to see if there was anything that jumped out. And it's the same as the data. I mean, the I can give you percentages that are more specific, like classroom efficiency, but, and I can send those off to Jim. You know, how we do that is pretty simple, but it's, you've grown tremendously in the non-classroom environment, which you saw in the data. So I can do that and I can send that to Jim. And if you, you know, he can share that at a later date.
That would be great. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much, Michael. And seeing no other hands raised, I will close, close public comment. And I will open it up for any trustee questions. Trustee Goff.
Yeah, I just wanted to thank Michelle and George again for the presentation. It was really nice. I've read this three and four times, but it was nice that when you hit on something, it's like, oh, you know, I remember that. I, I read it correctly. So it was nice to confirm my understanding of the report. I'm also, I love the comment about the institutional efficiency. I would love to see that as well. I think it would be especially where we are now as a college. It would be a really good part of the process of kind of with our new president coming on board to really look at how he might want to reorganize, how he might want to use the resources he has. So I would love to see that report as well. So thank you again for being here tonight and presenting. I really appreciate it.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Trustee Baldini.
Yes, thank you to George and, and Michelle and all the work. James, thank you very much. And, and Dr. Frost, is, and this more to Dr. Frost, would, and also to George and Michelle, would you encapsulate 1 through 17 into a board policy as far as going forward with the college? Something that, you know, to follow?
Yeah, I, I don't, I don't think I would. I think, I think we, these are very complex institutions to run. You, you see that. I mean, it's, there, there's, and I think it's, I think you probably have board policies or at least administrative procedures in a lot of these areas. Maybe you would want to review them. I would, I would say as you, as you go through your board policies and procedures on your cycle of updates, and I'm assuming that's going to start happening if it hasn't already, that a lot of the information, whether it's from ACCJC or, or from our report here, is considered. Because I think that's, you know, and I want to use a term that, that a lot of the smaller districts, and I say smaller, under seven, 7,000 FTS and below, their real struggle is, is memorializing procedure and policy and following them. Just because they, you know, we have managers, we have staff, everybody's wearing multiple hats. It's, it's very hard. And we'll see districts that go five or six years and never crack open a policy. They'll do something and we'll ask them and then we'll look at their procedure, your administrative procedure or policy that's totally unrelated. So I don't, I don't know how involved the board is in, in obviously board policies, but even administrative procedures, just to see that, that the district is addressing some of these things. But I don't see how it fits in, in all these. And in fact, you've, you're addressing many of these already. You know, did I answer your question, Michael?
You certainly did. Thanks very much.
Okay.
Dr. Frost?
Well, and just real quickly to tie together what trustee Baldini was, was describing with, with Danielle's comment earlier and George's response, the board has asked for specific training and ongoing review of budget. So you'll see in my, in my annual agenda, in my report tonight, we have two budget study sessions a year now built into our annual schedule. And that, that came from a board request based on their reading of the FICMAT report. So, you know, it's just, it's just a good example of we're learning, we're applying it, and the board's insisting that it be codified the way Michael's describing in, in our practice. So, thank you.
And I was just looking at the FHRA and one of the no's they got, that, that, one of the things that the district got on the FHRA is, is on, does the governing board review and revise policies and administrative regulations at least annually? So that is one of the areas that the board could do better on, you know, with policies in general. So versus worrying about putting all of this in policy, just kind of working on looking at policy on an annual basis. So in addition to talking about Dr. Frost, you know, the board could look, you know, work on policy. It looks like you're already, look, that's one of your recommendations already. I can tell. So what you're saying, Dr. Frost?
Well, you're, you're, you're just making us all feel good because now is the board approving additional policy, but we're going through procedure review. And most importantly, we're, we're learning from our practice now. And so we're learning how to apply our own procedures. And so, so this initiative is really since January and was inspired, Doug Roberts, Jim Reeves, your report. So it, it, this, it's a real feel-good moment for, for I think the board anyway, to hear your comments.
Good.
And keep in mind, it's the administration that brings the policies and procedures to the board to review, to, to look at. So they still have, you know, it's all, it's all communication. So the board just can't say, I'm going to, I'm going to update my, your administrative procedure. That has to come through process and that process is the value. Yeah. So good. Anything else?
Any other hands raised? George and Michelle, I think my, my question is trying to get, how can we get more from our, our auditor? We, we're in the final year of a three-year contract with our, our current auditor. And the thing is just kind of, I'm scratching my head that we just, the audit didn't pick up. And I've asked you guys about this before and you guys said, no, this is probably the, maybe the auditor's job. We had, they, they came in and gave our audit and finance committee a pretty detailed report on Monday. We went over some, some questions, but what was clear is how they were, you know, making the audit came through cleanly over the past couple of years, was that they were looking at, you know, the district-wide or district-wide funds, you know, basically looking at special fund, there's our, our general fund account and our special fund account together and basically not revealing any sort of issues though, with the budget deficit spending out of our general fund. And that seems, that's, it just seems weird to me that an auditor wouldn't, wouldn't call that out i- i- in any of their, in any of their reports. Go ahead, Sergeant Michelle.
Well, auditors have very, it's, it is very frustrating. I mean, auditors have very specific things that they are asked to look at. And, and that's what they are contracted to do. And they follow a very specific blueprint and they, they follow that blueprint for all of their, of all of their contracts. And they don't think outside of the box, the whole, a whole lot. They just don't. And it is frustrating for districts. It's at the K-12 level as well. I mean, I get the same question all the time about, you know, why didn't, fraud will happen two months later, you know, why didn't the auditor find fraud? Well, that's not what they're contracted to do, right? I mean, they're, they follow certain audit guidelines and that, that's what they do. They sample transaction. They just look at certain things. And so George, is, is deficit spending something they're asked to point out?
Well, I think Jeff, you may have asked us this question in the interview. I can't remember, but this is my biggest pet peeve in our entire system.
Oh God, he's gonna, you're gonna get him started.
I love it. I love it.
I used to argue with our auditors to look at something. Because I want to know whether it's okay or it's not okay. Now, I worked in, I was a CBO in a county that had a very strict office of office of education. So I had that to lean back, you know, to lean on because that office of ed was not fiscally independent. And if you understand how this all works, that, so they're marching to the order, the most strictest orders as it relates to internal controls, et cetera. So I had to go to the county office of ed. I, I could not get, it doesn't matter who you hire, but essentially, an external auditor comes in, they get their marching orders annually from the chancellor's office that says, you're going to look at these 10 things. And they're going to look at those 10 things. And they're going to sample 10 things. They're not even gonna, they're not even gonna, you know, and they're going to say, well, we don't really have time. At the end of the day, if you really want to know, you have to hire a, you know, an internal auditor that, that would, that you establish a testing, you know, the parameters for testing. And then that person really should report or at least respond and communicate with the board in open session related to findings on a monthly basis. It could be in writing, et cetera. But you're not going to get it from an external auditor. It's a requirement. There's no way around it. It's, it's, I don't, I mean, I've had so many arguments with external auditors that it's, I'm tired of it. So.
And they're always looking for you. They're not, they're not, they're not there to, to find that stuff. They're just not. That's not their scope. As frustrating as that seems, that, that is your CBO's job. I'm just telling you.
You're not large enough to have an internal auditor. You barely can have a controller, you know, and the controller is doing so many, I mean, wearing so many hats that it's not even, it's, it's so unfortunate. But if you ever have money, you know, in the future to, to hire an internal auditor or get somebody 20 hours a, a month or week or whatever, and, and develop a testing program where they go in and test certain things, I think you would be.
But, but deficit spending is your CBO's job to find. That's not your, it's not an auditor's job to find. I'm sorry. That's a CBO's job to find.
The, the auditors made it very clear that that's not their job, but they also said that they did see it. But they didn't report on it because that was not within their scope. It's not what they were asked to do. So they just look at the numbers that we present to them and make sure that those balance. But even though they see these things, it's not within their scope. So they don't report it, even though they know it's there. That's what was the most frustrating. I mean, that, that, I mean, that just drives me nuts.
Yeah. So we had, we had a district several years ago that had, that was, it was a small district, about $30 million operating budget. They had 35 million in debt for 10 years. And they were, not one audit mentioned it. I mean, literally, it's just crazy. And there's just example after example. And I would, I would just lean on, on Jim and his team to, you know, to keep communicating like you are and build that trust back where you, you really see the, you know, you can trust what's happening and not get blindsided like you did last summer. So until you feel like you have the money to, to, you know, to help Jim's department.
It's gonna take a while for you to trust again, unfortunately. It is, it really is. And that is unfortunate. But you will. It's, it's, you're going to ask more questions and Jim's going to get tired of the questions and that's okay. He'll, he'll be patient with you and he, he knows why you're gun shy. And, you know, that's, that's okay. Dr. Frost will be patient too. That's just, they know why you're asking all the questions. And then you'll try, maybe he won't be. I don't know. I'm watching his face. Maybe he won't be patient. I don't even know him.
Yeah, he's been very graceful, been very graceful so far.
Yeah, I mean, a, a culture of questions is very good.
Yeah.
As long as everybody enjoys questions, get to brag about what you know. You know, I mean, that's just the right, the right frame of mind. And, and you guys are poised together.
We learn together.
Yeah.
And you'll trust, you will trust again. You will. You've, you've learned an unfortunate lesson. And many of us have, have gone through unfortunate lessons at some time in our career. And I'm sorry that you have.
Yeah. And I'm trying to look to, just thinking about forward. So you're suggesting maybe an internal auditor, although it sounds like that could be quite expensive.
You're too, you're off, you're, you're too small to have an internal auditor.
What about bringing in like?
But you are going to be community supported. So you might, you really might be able to get there at some point. I mean, you are going to be, you are community support. At some point, you may be able to get there. Really, actually, you may be able to get there.
You know, I would say, I would say, you know, give Jim and his team an opportunity in a few years from now, when you have that, that extra tax base, you know, and you're, you're, you're exceeding your expenditures, you're building, you know, you get the ending balance built up. But I, I, I would give them an opportunity. I mean, they're doing, it just really sounds like they're doing great things. Or they completely tricked us tonight. One of the two.
No.
Which I know, I know.
Yeah. Well, thank, thank you very much. I just, like, the last question is where it's, you know, the board is all, we're very much, we're, we're not forgetting about the past. We're learning from the past and we're thinking about how we move forward. So this never happens again. I mean, that's, that's what we're really focused on. In terms of, you provided some recommendations. I'm also thinking something else is really important to the board. And you mentioned in terms of one of the recommendations is kind of more greater training. And I'm curious where it, having maybe somebody coming in from externally to, and not because the CFO's office has so much stuff going on already, but to have kind of a third party come in, is that something, you know, FICMAT could, could, could do? Are they available to provide those kinds of services? Or, and I'm just, again, just trying to think about more training opportunities, one for our trustees and then also members of our planning and budget committee, in particular new ones.
Yeah, no, we absolutely could. We, we would do it in conjunction with George. So if you're tired of George, then.
Yeah. You don't call back. It's, you know, I'll take it. I won't take it personally.
Oh, yes.
No, we have a, we have a very large firm. We have, we even have an internal auditor on our, in our firm that, that does auditing. But we're not here to get, we're not here to get extra business.
No, no, no. You've never suggested that anyways. But it's, I think, it's good to have familiarity with two, with our school too, that you guys already have, right?
Yeah.
But yes, that is something that we could do. Yeah. Yes.
Okay, thank you. Any, any other questions for trustees? Thank you. I, I'd be a little remiss too. I didn't want to really thank also kind of you guys, Michelle and, and George, you guys mentioned how forthcoming, you know, the administration was, or, or interim superintendent at the time, Oscar DeHaro and Doug Roberts, I really, it was much like, just amazing work and a crazy, crazy, crazy time during the holidays. And I just wanted to let them know how appreciative that the board is of, of their efforts and their work with, with, with you. And then of course, and Jim taking on the, the reins too, and following up a lot of those recommendations. And absolutely, Michelle and George, thank you guys so, so much for, for being here and being just a tremendous resource. And Michelle letting me call you late, late for good to kind of follow up questions and what do we do here in this circumstance and so on. I just really, really appreciate you making your, you guys so, so available. It's, I mean, true, true public servants. So thank you.
That's what we're here for. And, and continue. If, if we can be, if, you know, anybody has questions in the future, we're, we, we will still be here. Okay. So just, we know, that's, we know it's a hard time. None of us got into this because it's easy. So anyway, thank you for letting us help you. Okay. Continue on with your meeting, but thank you for having us here tonight. And good luck to all of you. Okay.
Thank you both.
Have a good one. And, and Jim, I may see you at ACBO?
You will see me at ACBO.
All right.
We'll, we'll trade stories.
I don't know what, you know what that is.
It's a, it's a conference next week.
Thanks again, you guys.
All right. Bye-bye.
Thank you. Thank you for indulging that terrible joke. Okay. So moving on to reports. And we'll move on to our first report, Associate Students of Napa Valley College, Marcus Texan.
Good evening, trustees, Dr. Frost, college administrators, faculty, students, and the college community. ASNBC has been hard at work closing the books for the 2021, 2022 academic year and planning for the graduation reception that is scheduled two weeks from now. ASNBC is planning on providing photo booths and water to graduates and their families, as well as depending on the availability of volunteers, we may also be providing snacks. It only felt a couple of weeks ago that I delivered my first report to the board. I still cannot believe that this is the final BOT meeting where I'll be delivering a report. Has been an informational and worthwhile stay here at Napa Valley College, but like many good things, it has to come to an end. I'd like to thank the board for each opportunity that it has allowed for student input, as well as thank college staff and faculty for adapting to the changing needs of our students. For the last time, this concludes my report. Thank you.
Marcus, very much. And well, well, well done. And well, well, well done. And classified Senate report, Danielle Alexander.
Oh, good evening. I appreciate the opportunity to give the classified Senate report. Since my April report, the classified Senate has been continuing our work of coming together as a cohesive group with a focus on shared governance. We are meeting regularly, enjoying expanded teamwork, and really just finding our way on this path together. Our main focuses right now are increasing our district committee participation and effectiveness, and participating in the training that we need to be effective in shared governance, as well as understanding, reviewing, and editing APs and VPs as, as is pertinent. In the spirit of solidarity, we're very blessed to be working with and learning from the administrative and academic senates. It's a wonderful breath of fresh air to be a part of this Senate collaboration. And we are going into graduation with a feeling of hope for what we all will create together next. And that is a short and sweet report. That's, that is done. Thanks for having us here. It's been a good meeting.
Thank you, Danielle. Classified Association report, Dixie Larson.
Hi, everybody. I hope I can get through this report without my dogs barking.
We love dogs.
Okay. So, good evening to everybody. I would just like to talk a little bit about COVID-19. As of today in Napa, there were 130 new cases reported, and that's just individuals who went to a test site. With home tests, that number is likely larger. The news has also reported that cases are again rising, although at a slower rate than previous surges. However, on May 4th of this year, 2,000 individuals died in the U.S. of COVID. We are seeing more activity, and so it is time to break out your mask, break out your tests, and be a little more cautious, said Dr. Sarah Cody, Public Health Officer of Santa Clara. California as a whole is reporting about 8,000 daily coronavirus cases in the last week, up 18% over the previous week's tally of 6,800 cases a day. The statewide test positivity rate has climbed to 4%, and a week ago it was 3%. Coronavirus positive hospitalizations also have started to tick upward, and although the number of patients needing intensive care has remained relatively stable, we still don't know which individuals are likely to experience a poor outcome from contracting the virus. Health officials across state widely agree that it's still prudent to take precautions when coronavirus transmissions are high, including wearing a mask indoor public spaces, being up to date, up to date on vaccinations and boosters, and gathering outdoors. Unfortunately, it seems that in the beginning of the pandemic, mask wearing was to protect others, and it's morphed into wearing a mask to protect yourself. And the CDC has not changed their recommendations for individuals 65 or older, or individuals with high-risk conditions. And we do have a population of that group on campus. And now in June, you have decided, you have decided to remove the mask mandate, and everyone is expected to return to campus on August 1. We would ask that the college continue the mask requirements in June and through the fall. Covid.ca.gov recommends the following at work. Masks are strongly recommended for everyone indoors. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Larson. We have our administrative confidential Senate report. I know Bob Harris isn't here. Is Maria Villa Gomez in his place? We do not see her in attendees or panelists, so we'll move on to our academic Senate report, Dr. DeJaro.
Hello. I am not Dr. DeJaro. She is not here tonight, but I have her report, and I'd like to go ahead and give her a report right now.
Please.
Good evening, Napa Valley community and trustees. I'm so sorry that I'm not able to be with you tonight. First, I wish to congratulate the faculty who were recommended for tenure by the Academic Senate. I also wish to acknowledge the work of the tenure committees and their commitment to academic excellence in teaching. Tonight, I also want to acknowledge that the Academic Senate recommended by acclamation to confer an honorary associate of science in addiction studies to Mr. Timothy O'Connor. Dr. Alejandro Guerrero shared this statement. The Human Services and Addiction Studies faculty and staff supports the honorary AS degree bestowed to, to Mr. Timothy O'Connor by the Academic Senate. The loss of Mr. Timothy O'Connor was a devastating blow to our students and the NBC community. This degree eases the pain a bit and provides much-needed comfort to Mr. O'Connor's family and fellow NBC students. We appreciate this recognition. In solidarity, Dr. Alejandro Guerrero. It is the hope of the Academic Senate, the board will confer this deserved honor on Mr. O'Connor. I wish to express my most sincere condolences to the family. The Academic Senate continued its duties through a difficult semester. We are looking forward to working with our new president. I am hopeful that as we transition to a new administration, we will enter a period of healing and collaboration, and will model to our students how to live in a world in common with others. I also hope that we can return to the college we used to be, a college where the leadership understood its roles and their functions. With that in mind, Dr. Frost and I are working on our joint letter to add to the tech visit application process that I have begun. The Academic Senate looks forward to our working together at that visit. At the direction of the Academic Senate, I will be sending trustee Dodd a letter requesting a meeting between the Academic Senate leadership and the Board of Trustees, as is our right under Title V, Section 53203(c). Perhaps we can review some of the work trustee Baker and I began a year ago. Lastly, the Academic Senate continues its commitment to work collaboratively with the Office of the President and the Board of Trustees to ensure we serve our students effectively. This concludes my report.
Thank you. And guess who's next? Back to the Association report.
Start my clock over, please. Okay? I actually, I, I don't even have anything written down. And, you know, stuff's happening all the time. But I'm, I'm not going to concentrate on stuff because stuff is just stuff right now. Um, I, I want to, I want to end the year on a good note. And I do want to talk today about my friend, Carleen Corey. That's who I want to talk about today. Um, Carleen Corey is one of our faculty in the English department. She has worked here for about 20 years in the English department and also was on the executive board. Um, just left the executive board because she is retiring this semester. And so I wanted to say that sometimes we have faculty that are here for 20-plus years and they retire, but because they are part-time and not full-time, they don't always get the recognition of their full-time counterparts. Yet that does not mean that they have not been loyal to this college for decades. And our part-time colleagues sometimes retire like Carleen, which is so great because she wanted to and because she was ready to move on. Some of our part-time faculty also who have been here for decades retire unfortunately because we don't have the enrollment. And they don't get a class, and then they don't get a class again, and that's when they realize that that is pretty much the end of their career here. And they don't get the accolades that the full-time faculty do, but I wanted to say something about them tonight. The ones who are not coming back with us in the fall, including Carleen, who by the way, uh, can take credit or blame for my job here because when I was a part-time faculty member at Solano back in 2008 with her, she came to me and said, have you ever thought about working part-time over at Napa Valley College? And I said, I don't know. How far is it? And so we, she actually recommended that I, I apply to be in the part-time pool at Napa. And eventually that is where I've decided, is my home, and I love Napa Valley College. And so I just wanted to thank Carleen for bringing me here. Thank Carleen for her decades of service to this college and wish her a happy retirement. And that is my report.
Thank you, Christy. Thank you. And we will move on to our president and cabinet reports.
Good evening, trustees. My understanding is that Oscar DeJaro, Sarah Parker, and Jim Reeves have posted their reports and, and will not, do not have additional comments tonight. I'll just take a couple of minutes on mine. My, my report tonight is fairly long in, in writing. I won't go over all of it. Couple of things I do want to note, though. I, I was just particularly thrilled with some of the activities in the last couple of weeks as we're coming back to campus. Um, Dr. Sherry Tennyson, her, her work really showed on the plaza just last Thursday. There were over 100 employers, hundreds of people. Um, it was an incredible day at the college. Anybody that was on campus, you know, was able to see just a big return, a big showing. And there were student affairs staff, there were academic affairs staff, there were facility staff. There were employees from all over the college who were just taking the opportunity to thank people for coming onto our campus and be a part of something larger. I mean, it was a job fair, but it really became a community fair. And, and I just, I just really enjoyed being there. Um, I saw the last, the Sunday performance of Romeo and Juliet, and it was just incredible. I mean, for, I just couldn't believe just the, the quality and the acting in the show, that the direction was clearly professional all the way. And so I, I just want to tip it, tip my hat to the Fine Arts Department for a wonderful performance there. The deans, particularly through the leadership of Maria Villa Gomez, sponsored a potluck, which got employees together, socializing, and, you know, brought us all out of our shells a little bit, which I thought was just extremely healthy and enjoyable. And we've, we've, we've just been trying to put together little events like the Donut Days and things like that, just to, to get together on campus again. And it, it's slow, but it's steady. And I think, I'm hoping by the fall, folks will, will be much more comfortable with, with our return to campus life. And, 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 and yes, I, you know, I think we all agree with Dixie, as safely as possible, masked and so we can, we can still be healthy in, in this return to campus. Couple of the things I want to emphasize, I'm just flipping through my report here. I really emphasize enrollment in this report. It's something very concerning, and I want to thank both Dr. Parker, Jim Reeves, and, and Oscar for just really taking a deeper look and doing additional work with the high schools and the community before we go into summer. Because right now our enrollments for the, for currently for summer are down about 40% um, and, and looking, looking down for the fall. So we're making extra efforts as a team and we're, we're really, uh, you know, it's, it's one of those all hands on deck events. And so we're, we're, we're picking it up. Um, I made a mistake in a memo and it's in my report. I, I identified four years instead of three years on, on a revised process. I, I make mistakes. So it's in my report, pointed out, and that the corrected memo is posted as well. In addition, you'll see, I, I don't remember, 60, 60 to 70 procedures that have all come together since January. And you all have asked for an accounting, so it's here in writing. And, um, the, the, all the work the faculty did over a summer working on board policies, there's an accounting of those as, as an entire page. We largely adopted almost entirely the original language. Yes, there was some changes, but we, we, we changed minimally. Um, without adding any additional, I think, on our part. Um, and I think the last thing on the last page of my report, there's something the board has asked for since January that we've been discussing, that we now have in draft, is a, a, an annual kind of training and learning agenda for the board. And I, you know, going back to Danielle's comment, when we do budget study sessions, you know, next year, in, in this, in this last page, there's two of them. Those study sessions are open to everyone, and we really need to train as a community uh, in terms of how, how do we develop budgets together? How do we approve budgets that we're all comfortable with? And then how do we track and assure the transparency necessary? So what happened in 2021 never happens again. And so the board's working on that, and you'll see other training topics that would of course, will of course be open to everyone on campus, um, when, when the schedule is, is enacted. So, uh, thank you. That concludes my report.
Uh, Dr. Frost, you need to call on Charo and team that had a presentation. And you're muted.
And Mr. Reeves, are you going to make a few comments or am I, am I off on that? Jim?
Uh, I don't believe so.
Okay. I thought you said we're going to add a few things, and that's fine. So.
So let me call on Charo, and then I want to make sure I give Holly Dawson the opportunity to report because I, I didn't, I didn't ask her if she did or did not. So I want to make sure she has that opportunity. Charo? And she's not in the, on the panel right now.
Uh, hold on. Let me see. Oh, there she is. Whoops. Sorry, Charo. And Christina, I'm bringing you in. There we go.
Good evening, board and attendees. Um, every, at least every other month, or at least once a quarter, we would like to provide an update on our training and development efforts coming out of human resources. Uh, we have the responsibility of providing training and development for our classified professionals and our administrative confidential professionals as well. Um, this is all tied to us bettering employees in their positions and helping grow and feeding into any possible succession planning strategies that we have across the campus. And this, and this evening, we would like to share with you the success of our first year, our Cohort One of our Administrative Assistant Certification Program. And I am going to invite probably her last board meeting, even though I'm in denial, Christina Rivera, our Training and Development Manager, who will provide an update on the success of this program, um, along with some future training and development initiatives for both our classified professionals and our administrative confidential professionals. Christina?
Uh, thank you, Charo. Um, I have obviously two topics to talk about, and I'm going to start off with congratulations to the AAC Cohort One participants on your achievements. It was a long year of hard work and dedication to the program. And tonight is about celebrating your accomplishments. I enjoyed watching the progress you all were making and truly wish the best for all of you in your future endeavors. The goals for AAC were to provide foundational skills to operate as an administrative assistant, additional knowledge and skills that can be utilized in current position, and possibly if a job opportunity have, opens in another office, they can apply for those in the future. We invited participants to share a very brief testimony about their experience going through the program. And since I was not given a presenter, I am their backup. I will share a few takeaways and quotes from the AAC Group PDF file. This PDF file will be loaded on the Training and Development website, so I'll share a link and send it to Catherine so she can send it to the Board of Trustees to watch the entire, or not watch, but look at the entire PDF and see what a great job they did on the presentation. Here are some takeaways. We enhanced our skills and were given the tools to continue to do so by establishing contacts for continued learning and support. The workshop provided a way for us to connect with other departments on campus and learn institutional knowledge. Procedures were clarified, and we had the opportunity to learn from those who created them. So here are some testimonials. And if you want, Catherine, you could just leave it on the first slide because I kind of just, if you want to just leave it there, that's fine. I noticed you were scrolling. And sorry about my clock. And the first testimonial is that I'm going to read is Twila Gray. She's a business office. I jumped at the opportunity to learn, grow, and be stretched. I have gained new skills that will help me to be more efficient in my current role at NBC. I learned a lot of great things that I hope to put into use in both my work and home life. life. I feel if an administrative assistant position were to open up, that I would have the confidence to apply. The next one I'm going to read is Maria Ramos Tamayo. I definitely got what I was looking for, plus an increased sense of community overall as an MVC employee, as part of this cohort with fellow colleagues. I am grateful to HR for making this training available and making me feel supported and efforts towards career and personal growth. And the last testimonial is from Heather Richter. I was able to work on and learn about a wide variety of office and institutional topics. I really enjoyed it. One of the things that I enjoyed most was getting to know my fellow cohorts. It's wonderful to build connections with other staff in similar positions. Once again, congratulation to this group, that this is our first Cohort One that completed. So the next one I talked about is Training Development Report for what's upcoming in the next year. We are going to launch the Keys Program starting in August, and applications, and also the ad went out last week, and applications will begin sometime in summer. AAC Cohort Two is going on right now. It started in January, and it will be ending in December. So in November this fall, we are going to have applications for the third cohort. So that'll be going out in November. We are currently in communication with Classified Senate on a new program being developed that is focused on equity. And then we are also having some, some, uh, Summer Institute offerings, and ads went out last week showing what is being offered. We are starting the Summer Institute a little early. We're offering a training on board policy and APs for classified. And we also follow up in the summer with Brown App and Share Governance. And let, and let me share some other exciting programs that were scheduled for the summer, which is Returning to the Workplace, How to Manage Change, Get It Started with Microsoft Teams, Improving Physical and Emotional Health, and Career Growth. And then also with the Brown App, we're also gonna do Robert's Order of Rules. Thank you for letting me share the report, and an acknowledgement of the AAC Group to the Board of Trustees and community.
I want to thank Christina. Christina, if you recall, trustee Dodd and, and honorable trustees on the retiree list, Christina is the one that holds the record of years of service to the district as 42.41 years of service.
I wasn't gonna call her out, Charo.
I'm gonna call her out because I, I want to, I know we're gonna do this on May 19, but I asked Christina if there's a way for us to work together when I first got to the district. And so I'm very pleased that she's worked very hard in her role as Training Development Manager. Once again, very humble, but showcasing her talent and being the perfect example for all employees in Napa Valley College. So being that this is your last board meeting, thank you very much for all of your work. Thank you.
Thank you.
And thank you, Dr. Frost. That concludes my report.
Let's welcome our applause. Thank you.
In the meantime, I did learn from, from Ms. Dawson that she does not have a report for us tonight. Thank you, Holly. Thank you, everybody else. Thank you, Charo, for your patience in my trying to, trying to keep straight who's reporting each, each meeting. So I, I think that concludes our cabinet reports.
Thank you, Dr. Frost. We'll begin our trustee and board chair reports. Student trustee Soto Gonzalez. I hope he's still here. Maybe David has to study. Okay, I don't see him here. And, okay. Well, um, move on to, um, trustee Deluna.
I just wanted to say thank you to everybody that's put together. Sorry, my dog's gonna bark now. He's been quiet this whole time. But, um, I just thank you for all the end of the year celebrations. It's been wonderful to participate in them, to see how excited all the students are, and just to see the, the example and the, the commitment that our staff has to the college community. I really appreciate seeing that. And I just wanted to congratulate Maria Ramos Tamayo, I think, um, our edgenk recipient, Dr. Edgenk recipient. She said something really memorable during her acceptance speech, and she said that she's helping somebody through the registration process. And, and, you know, she said, reiterated that we each are representatives of the college, and that we each have a responsibility to our community to help when help is requested and needed. And I just love that she takes that so personally, and, and even in our dealings with her, she's just always so professional and just goes above and beyond in anything that, that we need. So I just wanted to say thank you to her, but also just recognize that that's what I see with many of our staff, that, you know, they go above and beyond what is needed, and I really appreciate that. And thank you for letting us participate in all these celebrations, and I hope to see everybody at graduation.
Thank you, trustee Deluna. Uh, trustee Baldini. Now I'll go trustee Rios next.
Well, my fellow trustee Rafael is going to say, why did you let him go first? Anyway, good evening and, and thank you. While, while the meeting was going on, actually had a, an academician from the University of Perugia, established in 1308. And Professor Moretti is also with the Academy of Fine Arts and started in 1578 in, in that same region of Umbria. Anyway, the, you know, Oscar, seeing this list of, of retirees, Christina that I've worked with in, I think, Class One of Puente way back when. Thank you very much, Christina. And Jolie, always been the welcome wagon at the school. Good luck to you. And Oscar, of course, and, and Matt being the, the man on the facilities. Professor Kell on the counseling I needed to do a few times as a, as a student. And Diana on her cycling, Professor Mathematics. And I'll, I'll miss you all, and good luck to you. It's, I, I too look forward to the graduations and, and got to participate as an attendee at the McPherson Awards, and that was, that was wonderful to see. Professor Ackerman and, and adjunct professor Campbell received those. Great job. Thank you. Thank you very much. And that concludes my report. Thank you very, thank you very much.
Thank you, trustee Baldini. Trustee Rios.
Yeah, I really think you should have put trustee Baldini at the end. I'm not quite sure what he was going on in those first couple sentences, but, you know, I guess you gotta give him his time. I've attended a number of the celebrations that have gone on this, this past week, and echoing a little bit what trustee Deluna said, it was amazing not only to see and hear some of the students, but also just the expressions of support and how, how much the, the staff, faculty, and everyone that works with all of those students that were being recognized, just the, the outpouring of the support and the expressions of, you know, love and just the connections that they built with these students over, over the time that they'd been here at MVC. So that was just a great reminder and kind of motivator for what we're doing here. And, you know, just remembering about what it's about, those students, and, and of course, the people that helped the students achieve their goals. So I really, really enjoyed attending those. So I think that was the, kind of the highlight of the, this past week for me. Of course, it had, we had a Budget Finance Committee meeting, which I think we, we had some good discussion there with our auditors, and I think we got them to agree to, to provide us a little bit more information that is not necessarily within the scope of, of the contract, but that will certainly help us, you know, evaluate our, our position and where the college, the district is at financially, specifically, you know, report a schedule that will show us on our spending, that, that would show us some of that deficit spending that we don't see, didn't see in the past. They, they stated that they could prepare a schedule that would show us any, anything like that in the future. So I think that, that will be helpful. Thank you. That is my report.
Thank you, trustee Rios. See, trustee Goff.
Okay, so I'd like to start off by congratulating the students and the staff, the graduates, the retirees, the award winners. There's a saying in education that, you know, we experience 100 days in May because it's so overwhelming, everything that, that goes on in this month. So I've been able to attend just a few events at Napa Valley College because they're overlapping with events at, at my school. But I have to agree with trustee Rios regarding the overall feel. You get reminded of, of why we're doing this, and it's really nice. We need this in May. We definitely need it. I want to thank Jim Reeves and his staff for all of his work on the budget. While the process is slow and I'm betting a bit tedious, it's clear you're making progress, and it's much appreciated. I'd like to thank Dr. Frost for your continued efforts to get the policies and administrative regulations published as required. The publishing of outstanding items as well as the continuous cycle of review calendar is a big step forward. Additionally, thank you for creating a task force to investigate the variety of ways to battle declining enrollment. While I believe marketing to our K-12 schools is a start, we must keep in mind that declining enrollment is at every level. There is a significant decline at the K-12 level as well. I believe we need to look at the workforce economic development plans for all of the cities in this valley. Additionally, we really need to look at future faculty needs as potential certificate and workplace skills come more into focus. As we're once again made aware of tonight, we are 39 faculty members over the FON. This is a huge financial burden that we cannot continue to carry. This is a reality that we must face head-on and make the difficult decisions sooner rather than later. Thank you, Board President Dodd, for taking the initial steps in investigating a policy and procedure review committee. I look forward to its development to keep NBC's next steps clear. As I was preparing for tonight, I inquired once again about the ASCC requested visit. I was happy to hear in our Academic President's Report that she has that letter, and hopefully it will be signed and mailed in the next week. I would also like to urge the board to continue to pursue our own training as well. We are moving forward. There's clear evidence that there has, there has been follow-through on several issues, including housing, procedure review, and enrollment issues. I'm happy to see a partnership between our current interim president and our incoming permanent president, having these two people work closely together at this point, while ensure that we continue to progress in what needs to be done in the coming months and years to make NBC a success. Dr. Powells and Frost, thank you both for your focus and willingness, sorry, to listen to each other and develop a clear path ahead. And that is my report. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Goff. Trustee Baker?
Yes, thank you. I'm sorry, I don't have my camera on at the top of my car. Yeah, I don't really have a real report tonight. I just have also been enjoying seeing my calendar populate with so many wonderful events. Fortunately, I, because I'm now employed full-time, I'm not able to go to many of them, so that's a little sad, but I have been able to pop into several of the Zoom events and am hoping to make it to a couple of the next week, and then we'll definitely be at commencement, so I'm very excited about that. Yeah, very pleased that we appear to be on track with our finances and just be more aware of where we are, where we fit, and where we're going. And so that's, that's good. It's also just to echo what Dixie was saying in her report, cases are rising. If, and, you know, we've got all of our holidays and Mother's Day just passed us, and we've got Father's Day coming, and Memorial Day, and family vacations and things, just be safe. If you can get vaccinated, please do. If you can get boosted, please do. And then wear your masks. I, I don't take it for granted, just because you've been vaccinated, you can't get sick. I have a friend who was very, very, very ill last week, and she's fully vaccinated. So take care of yourselves and be safe, and look forward to seeing everyone at commencement, if not sooner.
Thank you, trustee Baker. And student trustee Soto Gonzalez, I see, I see your, um, your back.
Yes.
Report you'd like to give?
Yes. Sorry about that. I've been having Wi-Fi issues. I don't know if you got...
Oh, no. Just as he said he was having Wi-Fi issues. And I will go ahead and give my report in NBC. David, come back. Just a few things to add, and maybe I think it would be good to kind of touch base with Holly at our next month's meeting. I did want to highlight one piece of legislation that she brought to my attention, which is AB 1505, which basically it's a law that sets the Fall 2022 FON count as a community college's permanent FON. So it doesn't, it's not based on any sort of calculation or anything like that. It says what's in time at, at Fall '22 is you're gonna be your permanent FON moving forward. So basically forcing community colleges to use this arbitrary number without any sort of funding or recognition of declining enrollment, just as where you're at is, is, is gonna be the requirement. So just to highlight that piece for everybody and just something to track. There's a couple of other, uh, important legislations that are heading along, but that one actually looks to be making some, some significant progress through committee. July 9th, we finally have our retreat date. I'm so sorry, trustee Goff is a kid, can't join, but totally appreciate.
That's okay.
With your fam, and, yeah, and, you know, working right now with a few folks, but now, you know, Dr. Powell, Dr. Frost, Dr. Munsami on a program for DEI training as part of that program. And so now that we have a date, I think it'll allow us to really settle in on some, some speakers, which I'm really excited about. And I think what, I think trustee Rios's recommendation is having like a real interactive, hands-on type of training and experience as part of that is, is what we're, is what we're looking for. I've enjoyed the, the fun events as, as well this month, and those, looking forward to those coming up. Staff Potluck. I was disappointed that my farro salad with kale was not really well-received, maybe a small little dent in it, but I did enjoy Daniel Alexander's pesto pizzas, which were very good, very good. That was her first shot at it. I, I don't want, don't want to like in on like a negative note, but I'm, I'm a little disappointed with leadership at Academic Senate right now, and including kind of the, the report that I heard right, right there, and specifically regarding the ASCCC site consultation, which we've, you know, the board has kindly requested from Academic Senate. You know, I believe it's starting since February, and it really has, has not made progress. We've tried to get out a letter. It's been taken a month to, to do that, when I'm not even exactly sure a letter is even necessary. My understanding is that application's already been submitted, but, and I understand also it's the number one priority for Academic Senate to get this consultation. It was also approved in December of last year, and it just, it seems to me it's, it's, it's more kind of about politics, and that's, that's why it's kind of driving this delay, which is, it's just really sad and kind of, it's frustrating to me, but mostly sad that it seems to be politics as the priority, talking about spending all this effort on, you know, votes of no confidence. I mean, imagine how much time and resources was spent during that for really what is effectively just a ceremonial vote that doesn't do anything. And so it's, it, instead of where we could have been working on together and doing, doing trainings and trying to come together, and we're just, we're, you know, wasting time. Ultimately, I'm really proud of my colleagues on the board because, you know, right now they're being leaders, and we're looking forward, and, and that's what leaders do. And so I'm, I'm really proud to be a part of this board and how productively and collegially everybody's working together. I'm actually getting a little teary right now, but it's, it's really... and how productively and collegially everybody's working together. I'm actually getting a little teary right now, but it's, it's really been, it's been, it's been amazing to see everybody work together and I know how hard it's been. I'd also really like to thank Dr. Frost for all of your tremendous leadership over the past five months. I know we have about two more months with you, Dr. Frost, and, and, you know, really appreciate all of your leadership and, and direction and focus and responsiveness and transparency. It's, it's really important and it's, it's, I think you heard it from Vic Matt tonight. And from the rest of the cabinet too, I think that, that shares similar comments is how, how responsive and reactive we have been. And that's exactly getting back to that. That's what leaders do. We're not about dividing. We can certainly look upon the past and learn from it. But we're about moving forward and learning from our mistakes and how we can move forward and productively and, and focus on, on students. I mean, that's, that's what it's all about instead of, instead of dividing. So again, I think, thanks to everyone. I am really looking forward to graduation on May 26. I think it's just going to be fun to see everybody and to get everybody, the gang back together again and, and doing things the way that they should be done. And so I think that'll be a kind of a very special, really special moment. I remember my first graduation, my cheeks were, were so sore because I was smiling so much. It was just such a happy day. So I'm just, I'm, I'm really looking forward to that feeling again. And, and I don't know if that's, that's my report. I don't see student trustee. Oh, there is, oh, there is.
Speaking of having the whole gang back together again, I, I reached into the interweb and pulled him out and.
That's incredible.
Hi, sorry. My phone died on me. Just I was about to say my speech. I was on 1%. Oh, sorry. Can you guys hear me?
Yes, we can.
Yeah. Yeah. My phone was on 1% as I was about to say my report. But yeah, I just wanted to say thank you to everyone, to you student trustees, to you, Dr. Frost, to the whole, actually Napa Valley College community for this amazing opportunity of me becoming student trustee. And, you know, just learning how everything works behind the college, because as you know, not a lot of students really know what's going on behind the college, other big decisions happening. Like, and I really saw that last May when we went to the graduation reception. Cause I still remember one person coming in and saying, I don't know you guys, but thank you. When we did the whole dry fire ceremony. But it, it was really amazing. I got to learn so much, even though I myself, like, you know, my career isn't really going with like political science or anything like that, but it's still good to know like all this kind of stuff of what's going on with the college, how it's affecting even all the students and faculty, professors, saying, you know, everyone like you guys. And yeah, and even though, you know, we have had our issues and problems in the past this year, but still, you know, no college is perfect. I mean, if you were to tell me that there is a perfect college, I'll tell you cow poo. I'm not going to say that. But you know, you can, I'm saying. But it's the thing that's, that's important is we're striving to, for perfection. Like as long as we're striving for it, the journey to get there, then I do believe one day, you know, Napa Valley College will be a perfect school. So once again, thank you guys so much for this amazing, amazing opportunity. And yeah, I hope to see you guys there at the ceremony.
Totally.
Guys were wondering where I was this whole day today. I was actually at UC Berkeley.
We got the right one.
I'm still deciding Berkeley or LA.
It's gotta be Berkeley. Go Berries.
Berkeley.
Okay.
That way you can come back and visit us more easily.
By the way, I should add, when I, when I first got here, I remember like at least four of you said, and just wait till you meet our, our student trustee. But you're going to be super impressed by this guy. They were absolutely right. I mean, you are just a phenomenal student trustee. So we're lucky to have you. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. We'll move on to committee reports. Michael, is there anything from DOS?
No, DOS nor VWT, those are scheduled this month later on.
And then I don't know if we need to do an audit in finance. Raphael covered that. I know it was covered in Jim's report too, how we're moving forward on that. And real property committee, nothing to report. That's right. Foundation, Kyle is not here. And let's see here. And then I should do something to report on, on the foundation. Something I think that's, you know, we're working on right now is kind of a wish list for the foundation in terms of your potential projects, facilities and other sorts of improvements. The, the foundation can kind of serve as a menu to potential donors. I think, and understandably, a lot of attention has been going to our VWT program, which is amazing, right? That I, it's the bread and butter of Napa County too, but I think there's other opportunities to find, you know, donors with the connections to other programs outside of VWT. So I think I'm hoping that that kind of wishlist menu will be helpful to do that. I know that's something that Dr. Parker has been working on too with the foundation. And then also just the Dr. Frost and Mr. Reeves as well is actually coming in and now joining our foundation board meetings. So being the kind of like that active presence from the college on, on the foundation board, which, you know, just hasn't happened in the past few years. So I think there's some positive developments. And let's see, from accreditation steering committee, trustee De Luna, anything there?
No, nothing.
Yeah.
Nothing more.
Okay. Well, we have 18.3, a future agenda item request.
I, I have two. I have two. I have one, I really want to push through a, a new trustee orientation plan. I think we really have to develop that to make sure that future trustees who come on really get to know processes. And then I also really want to push something that I mentioned in my board report, the policy and procedure review committee. I'd like to see that developed and have a couple trustees and the college president work on that just to see that we don't have overlap or we don't have contradictions. I think it's something that is worth doing.
And anybody have any comments on, on, on those?
I'll, I'll agree with that. What Elizabeth's proposing.
Thank you, trustee Baldini.
There's also already a board policy in place that indicates how new trustees should be given an orientation. So that we should look at and, and just maybe do it.
It's good catch up. You're right. And I just, I was just going to add that I've been asking other CEOs for their new trustee orientation agendas, just so we have something to build on. So good timing.
Yeah, I think just building that binder, I think we all received the binder, but I think how is that being followed through on and how is it being updated? You know, it just hasn't happened. So yeah, I think there's one thing about following the policy, but then also just making sure that the policy is meaningful. And just, yeah, just, just doing a little audit of that, that policy and how it actually works in practice. So I think that's a wonderful idea. I also think the board, a policy and procedure review committee is a great thing and that could be a standing committee. I know it is in, for Marin College too. And so I don't know the best way, and, and Dr. Frost, maybe we can talk about the way to explore this. I know this is something that you've been very helpful in outlining kind of an overall plan. But maybe understanding how other policy and procedure committees work in other community colleges, like I just, Marin, because I sat next to their chair during a seminar in, in, in December or January, and she had mentioned the idea and said it was like the most, it was just a great thing that they really, that she was particularly proud of and various, that it was meaningful to, to their work and very organized too. So I think that would be helpful to have some context about what other colleges are doing. And then maybe that could help us, I don't know, not, don't want to use this word charter, but really kind of understand what is the, the charter, I guess, but of, of that committee. And let's see, any other future agenda item request?
Trustee Baker has her hand up.
Wait, hold on. See, trustee Baker?
Yes, hi. Since I forgot to include it in my report, I would like to ask that we, on a future agenda item, officially congratulate trustee De Luna on her recent election.
Oh, yeah. Good. Yeah. Definitely. We all blew, we all blew that one. So yeah. And if anyone doesn't know what you're talking about, what, what trustee Baker is talking about, trustee De Luna was elected as part of the, of board of directors for the CCCT Board of Directors, which I think is just one of seven members or is it 13 throughout the, is it 21? Let's make it smaller. So it seems, you know, it's, yeah.
The miracle is the Northern California win because this is really rare. So she pulled this one out of the hat. I mean, this was a tough. This is definitely a surprise election. I didn't want to tell Inez this before, but this is a huge upset because almost always Southern California, the population centers win out over the north. So it's a big win.
Well, I have to thank my Sasa Chavez family because they all pulled out their connections and everything in Central and Southern California. Dr. Powell helped, trustee Baldini helped. You know, I didn't do any outreach in the beginning. And so when I knew it was tied, I, I did everything I could. It was really, it was a great process. It was, it was nerve wracking, but I really appreciate everybody's help with that. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee De Luna. And thank you for your service there. Future agenda items, anyone else? I have one. I think, you know, and this is dealing with enrollment and this is something I think is kind of a long-term, somewhat of a project. And I don't know if this is something that, I suspect that this is probably be something from, from Dr. Warhol's office, just in light of kind of the research aspect of it. But doing an audit of our classes in, in light of enrollment, where, you know, over the past five years, 10 years, you know, what has been growing, assuming that any have been growing, what has, where have we seen declines? Where have we seen significant declines? What are the student demographics from those declines? Age, race, gender, hometown? And maybe even the comparison of what kind of declines our, our competitors have seen. I'll call them competitors, SRJC, Marin, Solana, so on and so forth, Contra Costa. You know, I know we're doing all of this marketing and outreach and I just think we have to do it. It's just something that we have to do to get our, get our names out there. But it seems to me also that if we don't understand where we're kind of, where we're losing enrollment, how are we going to try to, you know, improve the problem and, and try to fix the situation? We just, I think we just need better data. Right now it seems like we're just throwing spaghetti at the wall and hoping something's going to stick. And I think allowing to have that data would allow us to be more focused in those efforts. And, and also consider other newer areas that, you know, maybe similar to any sort of business where, you know, their, their, their consumer base is, is declining. You got to look to other consumer bases to, 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 to pick up and, and grow business. And I kind of think it's just a good analogy for, for, for Napa too. So yeah, I think that, that just a real good audit of, of where we're, we're, we're seeing declines and also maybe, you know, the types of classes. Something that's always been kind of a head scratcher to me is more evening, how we don't have more evening classes. As someone who took, who did law school at night and was the only option for me because I worked during the day, I don't understand how we don't have more evening classes. Now, I, I don't have the data to back it up that, you know, there would be actual interest in those. But again, I think we need the data to, to show that. But I would be surprised if the data indicated that, you know, evening classes weren't desirable. And so I think any effort that we do to try to grow enrollment needs to be based on data. So, Dr. Frost, do you have any? Feedback on that or I'd hate to put you on the spot, but.
No, the problem is if I start feeding back on that, it will be another 20 minutes though, because there's, there's an awful lot I could say. I, I think it's a good agenda item and I know, I know Robin would be really interested in, in generating this data and doing the analytics with the trustees and the faculty. It needs to be an all-community project, frankly. Faculty are very interested in these, these questions too. I mean, I'd love to see an evening, evening programs come back, but frankly, a lot of colleges have cut back on, on the evening programs. And, and I can go into those reasons at another time. It's unfortunate, but, but some of the fortunate side of it is the fact that hybridized and online offerings provide even more flexibility for the, for the working population. And so, but I don't want to go too much farther into it now just because it's a late night and I see that's adding up and.
Yeah. And I just, and just lastly, I think too, why that was just striking a chord with me, that idea is because I know Dr. Parker is putting together an enrollment task force. And it just seems to me like the first thing the enrollment task force should be doing is looking at this data instead of brainstorming, which I know was, I think the last flex day that everyone was talking about, you know, what's, what they think is the issue, but none of that really was based on data. And so I just, I think we need that information. I don't need to repeat myself again. So I need, I just to give maybe consensus on that. If everyone's okay with that idea.
I think you're right. I think we, we need to look at, at industry here beyond just winery. What else is here? Whether it's related to winery or not, you know, what can we do to bring in more certificate and, and, you know, adults who want to progress? But Jeff, I also forgot, I, I really want to propose that we look into the issue Mary Robinette brought up during public comment regarding in the math, the math success center and the online tutors and requiring them to come to campus. I'd really like to find out if that can be fixed because it makes a lot of sense that the online tutors really don't have a place to sit that's quiet enough to do their job. In addition, the flexibility they have from working off campus allows them to be available for online classes. So I'd kind of like to see that investigated. I don't know if that's a Dr. Frost or Dr. Parker issue, but I'd really like somebody to look at that and, you know, address that issue with, you know, just really looking at that side of it.
Yeah, we will.
Yeah. I, I, I totally agree. I totally agree. Yeah. I see Baldini rate the thumbs up too. Two thumbs up easily. Yeah, no, I think that's, that you need to travel to give, give online lessons just to, just to be on campus as opposed to, yeah. Anyways, thank you for that. Let's see, announcement of future meetings. I believe we have a special meeting scheduled on 25th, but.
The 23rd and the 25th. The 23rd is a closed session. That's a review of terms and of payment on the financial documents for housing with the attorneys. Be done in closed session. And the 25th is the open session at which you would take action.
Okay. Thank you, Catherine, for clarifying. And then, yeah, our next regular meeting, it would be in June after graduation. Okay. Anyone doesn't have any further comments or discussion on that? We will adjourn this meeting at 9:35 PM. Thank you, everyone.
Good night.
Good night.
Good night.
Thank you. Good night.